Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, May 3rd Board of County Commissioner Meeting. Can I have Pastor Erin Berry, please? Welcome and thank you for coming.
Let's pray together. Dear God in heaven, we thank you for your daily mercies that are new every morning, for your sustaining grace over our lives. We thank you for your sovereign hand directing the affairs of mankind as you work all things according to the good pleasure of your will. Lord, we depend on you for all things, for life, for purpose, for forgiveness of our sins. Remind us of that dependence, Lord. We thank you for those who you have sovereignly placed in governmental leadership. You say in your word, "They are your servants for our good," and so we ask that you give them both wisdom and discretion, that your justice, goodness, mercy, and truth will be reflected in the very decisions they make. Give them humility and selflessness as they interact with one another. Let your will be done here in Brevard County, in our great state of Florida, in our nation, and in the world. And we ask all these things in the name of our son, of your Son Jesus, our Savior. Amen.
Thank you. And he's with Faith Baptist Church. Thank you so much, Pastor. All right. With that, I would like to call this meeting to order. If you'd just stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to minutes. I understand that one of the minutes were updated. I think everybody got a copy. The agenda's been updated. Can I get a motion, please? Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to resolutions. Commissioner Smith? You're on. You were.
Got it. Light doesn't work. Thank you, Madam Chair. Loretta, would you like to come up and stand at the podium while I read this? Yeah, the rest of you guys are welcome. All right, I'm going to read this, and then when I'm finished, I'll give you guys the floor. Whereas civic prayers and national days of prayer have a long and venerable history in our constitutional republic, dating back to the first Continental Congress in 1775. And whereas the Declaration of Independence, our first statement as Americans of national purpose and identity, made the laws of nature and nature's God the foundation of our United States of America, and asserted that people have inalienable rights that are God-given. And whereas the Supreme Court has affirmed the right of state legislatures to open their sessions with prayer, and the Supreme Court and the U.S. Congress themselves begin each day with prayer. And whereas in 1988, legislation setting aside the first Thursday in May in each year as a national day of prayer was passed unanimously by both houses of Congress and signed by President Ronald Reagan. And whereas the national day of prayer is an opportunity for Americans of all faiths to join in united prayer, to acknowledge our dependence on God, to give thanks for blessings received, to request healing for wounds endured, and to ask God to guide our leaders and bring wholeness to the United States and her citizens. And whereas it is fitting and proper to give thanks to God by observing a day of prayer in Brevard County, when all may acknowledge our blessings and express gratitude for them, while recognizing the need for strengthening religious and moral values in our state and our nation. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim Thursday, May 5th, 2022, to be designated as a day of prayer in Brevard County, and encourage the citizens to observe that day in ways appropriate to its importance and significance, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this third day of May, 2022. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve this resolution.
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Loretta?
Good evening to the commissioners. Thank you so much for the proclamation recognizing Thursday, May 5th, as the national day of prayer. We, the national day of prayer, this is the 71st year of prayer going on, going on for America, going, prayer going on for our leaders. And we are here representing as volunteers of the National Day of Prayer Task Force, helping to orchestrate and coordinate different prayer events throughout the county. And we have given each of you a bulletin with different prayer events occurring in Brevard County. We have a couple of the coordinators here, Pastor Evy from the Mission Church, Pastor Evio Strander, Pastor Mark Ostrander. We have Pastor Carmen and Pastor John Keen from Acts 2 Ministry. We have Margaret Irving, one of the coordinators as well. So we just thank you for acknowledging this day in Brevard County. Know that not only on this day that prayer is going on for you, but every day, people are praying for you. I'm just gonna let Pastor Evy say a few words.
We do pray for you and the county and our sheriff that's in the back, and all of you who are in leadership. We thank God for you. Thank you for bringing a blessing over all the cities in Brevard County and all the people by being willing to make this proclamation. God will bless you for what you have done, and the blessing flows out over all the county. And we just thank you for having such open and willing hearts. And we want to tell our commissioners and leaders, we actually love you and thank God for you, and know that blessings are gonna keep coming forth in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. Thanks so much. You guys wanna come up? Andrea? Go ahead. Yes.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you so much for having us here today. We are here with Brevard County 4-HIT, and we are here to present our two public speaking competition winners. So every year, we do a public speaking competition for all of the youth in Brevard County. And this year, we had over 300 kids participate from all across Brevard. They're able to learn public speaking and communication skills by researching, writing, and then delivering a speech on a topic of their choice. And they compete at the classroom, school, and then county-wide levels. So today, I am so excited to present to you our fifth and sixth grade winners, and they're here to share their speeches with you. So first up, I have Marlin Nolting. She's from RL Stevenson Elementary, and her speech is entitled, "Why You Should Eat Ice Cream Before FSA."
It's that day, the day that us kids dread the most, FSA. FSA is tomorrow. And you get home from school and you get ready to do your homework, but you realize that you have no homework. So you find something relaxing to do. Maybe you read a book, or play an instrument, or maybe you go to the freezer and find the best thing in the world, ice cream. What flavor will you choose to relax on the couch with? There are many types of flavors, such as pink lemonade, Pop Rocks, Golden Nugget, and Cookie Butter Ice Cream. If you're one of the adventurous ones, you might want to go with Kraft Mac and Cheese, Dill Pickle, a catching fire ice cream with a real-life scorpion on top, or flaming hot Cheetos Ice Cream. But you can stick with the basics, vanilla, chocolate, strawberry, if you want to. There are many benefits of eating ice cream. The two most important things that will help you on FSA are stimulating your brain and making you smarter. Eating ice cream can help stimulate your brain and make you happier. According to one study from Kyren University in Tokyo, Professor Yoshihiko Koga found that eating ice cream in the morning may improve alertness and mental performance. It's proven that people who had ice cream first thing in the morning were more alert than people who didn't do so. Feeling low or sad? Well, grab a spoon and dig into your favorite flavor of ice cream, because eating ice cream can actually cheer you up. There's a scientific explanation for the same. When you eat ice cream, your body produces a hormone known as serotonin. Serotonin, which is also known as a feel-good hormone, well, makes you feel happy. You're probably wondering, how does eating ice cream connect with a successful outcome on your FSA? Well, if your brain is stimulated and you're happy, you will ace the FSA. But make sure you choose your flavor wisely, because you don't want to end up with a scorpion on top of your ice cream.
Thank you, Marla, for giving us all a great excuse to have ice cream for breakfast tomorrow. So up next, we have our sixth grade winner, Lily Myers. She's also from RL Stevenson Elementary, and her speech is entitled, "Theme Park Etiquette."
Central Florida is famous for many things, theme parks being one of them. Some people even travel from near and far just to go to one of Florida's popular amusement parks. But those trips get ruined by the you-know-who type of people, the doofuses of theme parks. So I thought that these people needed a little lesson on proper theme park etiquette, so they would stop being a doofus and start being a do right. To specifically point out, a doofus thing to do is to pull out your phone and decide you have to see what the wait time on a ride is. But in order to do so, you stop in the middle of the walkway. This will cause a massive collision with you and basically everyone else in the flow of traffic. Even though most people will manage to dart out of the way to avoid your doofus-ness, some will still end up colliding with you. But if you want to be a do right, then step to the side, letting the pedestrian traffic flow, and your heels will thank you later. I am sure some of you have had this unlucky experience, where you have just gone on to a ride and you are so ecstatic, because it's the first time you've ever been on this particular ride. Little did you know, by the time the ride will have ended, your ears will be ringing. This was caused by screaming girls that went [screaming] the entire ride. What a nuisance. Screaming on a ride is an okay thing to do. However, constantly screaming the entire ride, that is being a doofus. So be a do right. Scream once or twice, and try to avoid screaming just to scream, because you and your friends are giddy. At every single ride at the theme park, you're going to have to wait in a line. Whether that line wait is enjoyable or not, all depends on the people behind you. If the people behind you are so close to you that you can feel their breath on the back of your neck, it is time you pull out your helicopter arms or decide to do some yoga. Of course, everyone would rather enjoy chilling in a line, minding their own business, than having to act like they have to stretch the entire line wait. So next time you're in a line waiting, make sure you be a do right, and give the people in front of you some personal space. Well, our educational tour about theme park etiquette has come to a close, so hopefully, next time you go to a theme park, you will be a do right, and not a doofus.
Thank you, Lily and Marla. You both did such a great job, and we are so proud of all of your accomplishments and your great public speaking abilities. And thank you, commissioners, for all of your support, having us here today. We really do appreciate it, and so do all of our youth in 4-H.
Thank you. That was excellent, young ladies, and very brave. I'm sure it was a little odd and awkward to be here in front of this large group of people and in front of us. So thank you. Thank you for sharing your gift with us. All right, moving on to E3. And do I have a Dr. Chris Long here?
Sorry, it's still weird that we call it Dr.
I get it once in a while, too. It's kinda neat. So you're gonna be accepting the resolution?
I am.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
All right. And this is a resolution recognizing the late Llewellyn M. or Doc Erhart. I may refer to him as just Doc, because there's like a lot of names in there, and it's just a little bit more flowy. Whereas, as a new university professor in the early 1970s, Doc Erhart began studying sea turtles as part of a NASA grant to understand vulnerable animals near the prospective shuttle landing facility at the Kennedy Space Center. And whereas, in the early 80s, Erhart expanded his sea turtle research south to include Brevard County's southernmost coastline, and along with his students, was the first to make systematic, season-long counts of nesting abundance on the beach, providing that the stretch had more nesting loggerhead sea turtles than any other comparable length in the Western Hemisphere. And whereas, throughout the 1980s, Erhart adeptly soft-soled turtle conservation to key regulators, the governors, the governor, a senator, celebrities, media, conservation leaders, and the public by using one simple persuasive tactic, show them a nesting turtle. And whereas, on a frequent basis, Erhart would host influential visitors to join the UCF Marine Turtle Research Group on a night monitoring session, and would invite them to sit behind a laying loggerhead, listening to the intriguing biology of the experience through his stories and absorbing the rarity of the circumstance. And whereas, through Erhart's efforts with these powerful decision-makers, as well as his presentation on scientific evidence from detailed nesting data, segments of the South Brevard coastline became protected, and in 1991, were designated as the Archie Carr National Wildlife Refuge. And whereas, the hundreds of influential students and colleagues Erhart mentored and influenced are continuing his work in science, conservation, and resource management. And whereas, with his passing on March 3rd, 2022, Erhart left Brevard County with the pride that knowing that thousands of nesting sea turtles arriving home at this short stretch of refuge beach each year to carry out their own kind, receive good stewardship, and continue to inspire our future leaders, citizens, and visitors. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby recognize the legacy of Llewellyn M. or Doc Erhart, and honors his profound positive effect on Brevard County and its residents, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this third day of May, AD, 2022. Can I get a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Do you have anything you want to say?
Uh, wow. Voice is shaking a little bit.
It's okay.
Yeah, I mean, like you said in the resolution, Doc was part of conservation here in Brevard County for 50 years, and he did so much for nature. He has promoted nature and conservation so much. But Doc would always say that his legacy was people like me, students. And people like me got to learn so much from Doc, research skills, scientific information, all sorts of stuff. But really, we learned how to be better people, and how to be humble and hardworking. And that's really his legacy. And that network of people that learned all those things from him still exists today, and still promotes conservation in Brevard County, and really across the country. And I'm just happy to be the representative of that here that's accepting this resolution. I just want to thank all of you for taking part in that today. And just like, the final thing that I have to say is just that those resources, that physical manifestation of Doc's legacy is still here. The sea turtles are still here nesting in Brevard County. The lagoon still needs conservation, the nearshore reefs, the beaches. And I just hope that that legacy continues on into the future. So, thanks so much.
Thank you. And I want to thank Vince Lamb.
Yes, thank you, Vince.
Fellow sea turtle lover and environmentalist for bringing this to our attention and bringing this to our office, so we could have the honor of presenting it today. So thank you, Vince. All right, commissioners, moving on to consent. All right. I don't have any cards. I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett for approval of the consent agenda, and a second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public comments, Ms. Jana Scott.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. I spoke on this subject previously, and I wanted to bring it back again. It's like the squeaky wheel gets the grease. I've been watching taxing authorities in Brevard County for over 40 years. One taxing authority who has the right to tax their residents, and also to give money away under the guise of valid public purpose. So whoever, so one taxing authority takes the taxes and gives it to another taxing authority. And in this case in particular, I want truth in taxation about the school board. Many of the, well, in particular, the parks now, Central Parks in particular that I'm aware of, maintain a lot of school board property. And I just would like a line item. Nothing will ever come of this, but just a recognition at the end of everybody's budget of what they are giving to other taxing authorities in the way of in-kind contributions, like maintaining the property, doing some maintenance or something of that sort. And this comes to mind to me in particular, because the last, for the last 31 years, Cocoa Beach, for example, has maintained an Olympic pool, and also sports fields for the school board primarily. I mean, other people use them. We have these very interesting local agreements. But this last year was the first time in 31 years that the school board paid anything for those ball fields. And I think it was quite stellar. And I just think now that the school board is asking, intending to ask for another resolution or put it on the ballot to increase our taxes again for the school board, I just think it would be very enlightening to the public exactly how much maintaining schools and school activities here in Brevard County cost. Probably a little late at the game, but you're such a great chair lady, Ms. Zonka. And I just want you to use that gavel a little bit stronger when some of your board members take it on themselves to do a three-minute diatribe ad hominem attack of someone in the audience. I just think there's nothing about it. We come to the public forum to discuss the issues, not the personalities. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dontavia Smith?
How y'all doing? Good morning, afternoon, sorry. Dontavia Smith, Cocoa, Florida. Recently, I sent a press release last week. It was fun doing it. I proposed a couple of ideas to the Charter Review Committee, and it was one experience that I think that kind of got my blood flowing again as far as legislating legislative language and articulating it for the future of Brevard County. So next week, I'm not going to be here. I'm going to be on vacation in Brazil. I deserve that. But I'm not going to be at the Charter Review Committee meeting. But I do like, I would like to announce to the audience that I did propose the change of Article 1, which would change the name of Brevard County, well, have the voters have the option to change the name of Brevard County to either Blake County, recognizing the Honorable Richard Dick Blake, or Prosper County, which would allow citizens, guests, and tourists to understand that when you come to Brevard County, no matter whether you live, work, or play here, you will prosper. And also, last but not leastly, Beach County, which definitely illustrates the culture of Brevard County and the future of Brevard County and the tourists, because they're coming for the beach culture and not a space culture. That was one of my proposals, starting in 2026 as well. Number two, we change, would change the legislative body from a commission, five district seat commission seat, to a mayor commission seat form of government. The third proposal would also modify the structure of the office, making the county, I'm sorry, advising the powers of the mayor and county manager has, and redistricting their duties and powers. The third proposal is to recall any and all charter-elected officials under Section 4.2 of the Charter. The third, the fourth, I'm sorry, the fifth proposal was coming from Section 7.2, 7.4, where it would allow the Charter Review Committee to meet every four years rather than every six years. And I think the last proposal was a nonpartisan election, making all Brevard County elections nonpartisan. Republicans, Democrats, nonparty affiliates, it shouldn't matter. Brevard County should have a clean slate of good leadership with integrity and have some kind of moral of the office. So therefore, I think those proposals, that I'm not going to be able to expound upon next week, gives me an opportunity now to kind of illustrate what are my thoughts and my ideas of the next 50 years of Brevard County. So thank you again. And I want to, I want to refer back to Ms. the past speaker. You are great, chairwoman. You lead very well, and I love you guys, too, regardless of how y'all do. And I think I've said that before, but I love you guys tremendously, regardless of how you do your business. But you do a good job, and I appreciate you, and I thank you for allowing me to talk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Sandra Sullivan?
So it was wonderful to see Doc Earhart honored here this evening for all the contributions he has done, and I've come up here many times and talked about sea turtle nesting with the largest loggerhead nesting in the world and where 50% of greens in Florida were key to both species' survival, and we owe so much to Doc Earhart. So, back in 1991, when the federal government came out with a federal recovery plan, it was Doc's research that resulted in our getting Archie Carr. Not only that, but he also helped us get Hightower. Were it not for his research, that also would not have been funded by the state. So this shows the dark line is the nesting at Hightower compared to the central Brevard study area. Doc said in his report, he said Archie Carr is the most densely nested loggerhead nesting beach in the western hemisphere. Now it's in the world. The numbers of nests of both species of turtles allow one to rank Hightower Beach with all of the very best nesting beaches in this country. It is worth pointing out that the green turtle is an especially wary, easily frightened species. It requires dark, undisturbed stretches of beach such that when turtles have been seeking out that stretch of beach for years, it is clear that the acquisition and the preservation of natural attributes would make it a significant contribution to the recovery of both species. So last week, I went up to Tallahassee because that beach is being threatened to be turned into a tourist destination when it has both state and federal conservation status. This is a letter that I'm going to pass up. And Satellite Beach rewrote the management plan to take out the conditions of funding to remove the purpose of being a dark and disturbed beach, to remove the limited human activity, even to remove the project site of the former county park that would violate a federal agreement, the LW 5401, which has a survey built into it. When this preservation/conservation area was created, Satellite Beach wrote the county and thanked you all for your foresight of creating this, and generations of Brevard residents would be forever indebted to the county in partnering with the city to create this. Well, this is now at risk. This management plan will go back to the FCT in August to determine whether they will pass it or not, and what they make these changes, then that will be just another regular park for tourism and will not have conservation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Barbara Perry?
I didn't expect to be called so fast. Hello, my name is Barbara Perry, Brevard County resident, 26 years, Melbourne, West Melbourne. I am homeless. I didn't want to come here tonight. I struggled with it because two weeks ago I was in the hospital, and my health is not really good. But I need for my story to be heard, and I was featured in a Florida Today article back in January of this year, tells a little bit more about my story, and so I kind of have like appointed myself the unofficial face of homelessness in Brevard County just because I made it in the newspaper. And also, I was reminded by a friend of mine who's also homeless living in her car that I'm her voice too, and for others who can't come and speak for themselves. I'm 61 years old. I'm a four-year breast cancer survivor. I have a bachelor's degree from Eastern Florida State College. My graduate studies for my masters have been put on hold because of my homelessness and my health. I've struggled with mental health, anxiety, depression, PTSD. I live with residual lifelong side effects from chemotherapy, recently diagnosed with COPD. I was living in a rental property owned by an unscrupulous landlord in West Melbourne who refused to make repairs. I was going through breast cancer treatment, and I was very sick, and there was a small leak in the roof that over a period of time, and the Florida rain caused that small leak to turn into a giant hole the size of a small car, and I had nowhere else to go but to live there. And then a pandemic hit. I was living in unhealthy, unsafe, unstable conditions until July of last year, when the county finally condemned that property, and I finally let them in because I was too embarrassed and too ashamed to let them in. In November 2018, I could foresee a bad situation getting really worse, so I started reaching out. I called 211 helpline, and I was told before the pandemic, the population of homeless is so high in Brevard County, there really is no help. After the pandemic, I called them again, and now they're the gateway to the assistance for housing. I've called the Women's Center, the Salvation Army, Genesis House, Red Cross, Love Inc., multiple faith-based agencies, Our Florida, the program launched by DCF, Help Florida. I've sent emails to Governor DeSantis, Senator Mayfield, Thad Alman. I'm still homeless. Last week, when they wanted to send me home from the hospital on oxygen, I couldn't have a home to go to to be put on oxygen. Wickham Park doesn't even have any availability for people, and I just have one last thing to say. In about a month, we're going to have hurricane season here. I know you're all aware of the need for affordable housing. Can I just finish this sentence?
Okay, 10 seconds.
Okay. Hurricane season, when one's coming, a big one, the governor declares the state of an emergency. The homeless crisis in Brevard County is in a state of emergency, and we need help. Thank you.
Thank you. And Neek, I want to say this right, I'm so sorry. Annika. Annika Charland.
This last name's a little easier. Good evening. Me and my husband own and operate Mrs. Mango &amp; Company in Rockledge on US 1. We've been there 39 years. My grandma started the business, and I was trained to take over. Last week, we got a visit from a code enforcement officer out of the blue. Like, everyone loves our place and our animals. Well, after spending all day yesterday with planning and zoning and trying to figure out a way to keep our rescue animals on the property, we were told that the land lot size is too small, and there's no exemption that we would qualify for. So the reason I'm here is to try to get a special exemption for the land lot size so I can get a conditional use permit, so I can legally hold on to my rescued pot-bellied pigs that have been there for a decade, that came from various places like the Brevard County Sheriff's Department. One was found wandering down River Road on Christmas Eve night that we rescued. Another was found on the back porch of an abandoned building. Two of them came to us because they were going literally 20 minutes away from being let loose in the wild in Titusville. And over the years, our hearts, we've taken them in, we've gotten them fixed, we give them medical care, we give them housing. They are pets. They are not raised for food. We do not breed them. We do not do anything with them. I started a petition in less than 24 hours. As of a couple minutes ago, we have 2,765 signatures. Everyone that comes to our property visits our animals. It's part of the charm of the business. We have Girl Scout groups, Boy Scout groups, moms, grandparents, our neighbors all around them love them. Well, now it's public knowledge that we know who made this report. It's a gentleman that has never been in our store, to my knowledge. He lives in West Cocoa. He has no say, has never been there, and his complaint wasn't even about the animals, it was that they were on the front part of the property that's zoned commercial. We have no problem moving them to the back part of the property. We just don't want to have to give up six of our pets. We love them. We've had them for years. They bring so much joy to the community. Like I said, we fix them all. They're all safe. They all get veterinary care. They're not harming anybody, and to try to rehome six pigs, it's pretty impossible because not everybody can have them. One of them came from a residential neighborhood that were given three days to find them a home, or it's a $500 fine. So, we're just asking for any help to do this legally, that we can just keep these pigs. We don't want to get more. We just want to let them live out their life in peace and keep them as part of our garden and our business. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pritchett?
Ma'am? Ma'am? Do you know what district you live in? District 2? Ms. Suzette's going to get your phone number from you, and I'll get something started and see if we can figure anything out.
I think I emailed Mr. Smith last night.
Okay.
Because this all has just happened in the last four days, so.
Commissioner Smith, you want to?
Well, we've already started that process.
Okay. Oh, wonderful. Well, thank you. Thank you so much for all your time.
Thank you. All right, that's all the public comment cards I have. All right, moving on to public hearings. Item H1.
Yes, good evening Commissioners. This is item H1, Proposed Amendment to Section 106-1 of the Brevard County Code pertaining to the Safe Use of Public Streets and the Creation of a New Article in Chapter 106 entitled Article 5 Pedestrian Safety Ordinance. This particular amendment to Chapter 106 makes it unlawful for a person to occupy a sidewalk, arterial or collector street, traffic median, crosswalk, bike lane, or on an off-ramp of I-95 and either interfere with or impact the safe and efficient movement of vehicular traffic, or exchange any physical item with an operator occupant of any vehicle that is within any lane of traffic, stopped at traffic control device, or at an intersection. This ordinance contains various exceptions to include vehicles rendering emergency assistance, vehicles removed from a traveled portion of a street or highway, activities between pedestrians on sidewalks, vehicles involved in crashes, individuals exchanging information for crash reports, rendering aid to at-large animals, permitted special events, activities in residential districts, exiting or entering any bus or public transit system, and individuals conducting inspections, construction, maintenance, repairs, surveys, or other legally authorized services. There is a first-time violation will be a civil infraction of a fine not to exceed $500. A second or subsequent violation will be punishable as a second-degree misdemeanor.
Okay, I have several cards on that, so if Commissioners would like, I'd listen to the public comment cards first.
Sure.
All right, Ms. Laura Moody? And after Laura, it's Rick Heffelfinger?
Thank you. Good evening. Laura Moody, on behalf of Sheriff Ivy and the men and women of the Brevard County Sheriff's Office who do work every day to make this community safe, simply stated, our streets in Brevard County are really intended for SUVs and sedans. They are not safe places to stand, to sit, or to solicit. Florida statute even defines streets as places where the purpose is for vehicular traffic. Really, when you look at the numbers, and I know the ordinance does a nice job of going through the numbers, but I just wanted to add a few. In Brevard, the Florida Highway and Safety Motor Vehicles Department reports that 259 pedestrian crashes have already happened between January 1st of 2021 through December 31st of 2021. 28 of those in Brevard County, those were fatalities. In the intersections, which is where this is primarily an issue, between 2016 and 2020, there were almost 15,000 crashes in Brevard County, and those occurred at intersections specifically. Of those, that accounts for almost 30% of the crashes that we see in Brevard County. During that same time period, 45 fatal crashes occurred at intersections, not just on roadways. In Florida, for the year of 2020, intersection crashes with fatalities, incapacitating or non-incapacitating injuries, and persons affected totaled 82,323. So I want to talk first about this ordinance, and I want to clarify some misinformation that I have seen and heard, and I don't know how much the Commission has seen and heard. But first, what the ordinance does not do, I think is important to note, this will not ban protests. It does not ban political sign-waving. It does not ban car wash signs that say, "Meet us over in the parking lot." It does not anywhere ban, prohibit, criminalize, or even mention panhandling that occurs in safe areas that aren't our arterial roadways. Those are our highly trafficked, high-speed roadways or collector roads that lead to those arterial roads, our on-ramps, off-ramps of I-95, and places that are just too fundamentally dangerous for non-motorists. It doesn't ban your tax service, Statue of Liberty, Frankie's mascot, firehouse sub, sign waiver. It doesn't ban any of that, and that's what I'm hearing, is people are concerned that they're not going to be able to stand on sideways, roadways with the signage, and that's not, it is in no way intended to impede First Amendment rights of free speech. Most importantly, it doesn't eliminate better resources that Brevard County has for issues that are addressed by services like 211 and some of the other resources that we heard one of the others speak about. What it does do, however, is create a preventative law with goals of eliminating catastrophic injuries and deaths. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Heffelfinger? And after Rick, Marilyn LaFleur?
Rick Heffelfinger, Cocoa, 2000 Juniper Drive, 32926. I have a letter here that I know that Commissioner Pritchett received from one of my neighbors, and I thought it was worthy to read in because I think it addresses some of our concerns, not only myself, but the guy who wrote this. So I'll go ahead and read this. He says, "I am writing a constituent in Cocoa to ask you strongly oppose the proposed agenda, item H1, Amendment to Ordinance 106.1, that has falsely portrayed itself as a pedestrian safety measure. My business occupies me most of the time, so I am generally unable to attend county commission meetings to speak in person. However, I strongly agree with the points Commissioner Tobia raised on the first hearing of this ordinance and Commissioner Zanka's concurrence, and that my fellow libertarians, such as Chair Slusher, who I entrust to present my views, we stand for freedom of movement, freedom of expression, and do not believe people should be fined or locked in a cage by the sheriff for nonviolent actions. Law enforcement should be reserved for violent criminals harming other people. I reject the premise that an activist nanny-state government should act to protect people from themselves. That premise is neither conservative nor libertarian. While I would be vehemently against this ordinance as presented and written even just on principle, I also believe it is being dishonestly presented. This ordinance is being proposed under pretenses of public safety, but this does not match up with all the official statistics available with the US Department of Transportation, National Traffic Safety Administration," and he listed a link here. And he says, "Which for 2019, the most recent year in which the data is publicly available, Brevard County has a total of 16 pedestrian fatalities out of a county population of 601,942. This is a .0026% of Brevard's population and is roughly comparable to the pedestrian fatality rate in other Florida urban and suburban counties such as Orange, Hillsborough, Duval, Broward, and so on. Alucha, Alute, yeah, however you say that county, was actually the highest outlier in this chart. It's unclear that any of these deaths would have been affected by the proposed ordinance. Speaking personally, I see people irresponsibly crossing SR 524 and SR 520 all the time, and the SR 524 and Cocoa Road intersection appears particularly dangerous due to the high speed and frequent presence of commercial trucks. While every death is a tragedy in perspective, this is two orders of magnitude lower than the COVID-19 death rate in Brevard County. Passing sweeping ordinance with broadly unintended consequences for such things would be grossly irresponsible and, in my opinion, simply an excuse to selectively jail the homeless and any other undesirables within a law written overly broad. It is already illegal under Florida Statute 316.2045 to impede the flow of traffic in public roads. Why is it that not sufficient? Please vote against this measure. And I heard some statistics about traffic accidents. This is pedestrians. Thank you."
Thank you. Marilyn? And after Marilyn, Ron Thomas?
I come down to address this because we do a flag wave up in Titusville twice a week. It's not anything political. It's to take back our country. Sheriff Ivy, I saw him, and he explained it all to me, and I turned around and took my whole group out, and he explained it to us again. We're happy with what it is as far as our group of flag waving. However, if one word gets changed in here from an "and" to an "or," all bets are off. We're going to be watching you guys. We're going to make sure, because Brevard County and Titusville is now awake, and we're going to be watching. We're not going to just sit idly by as things go by anymore. So, thank you. That's the only one thing I wanted to say, and I wanted to say thank you. That's the only one thing I wanted to say, and I wanted to say thank you to Sheriff Ivy, and we got our eyes on you.
Thank you. Ron Thomas?
I'm going to wave.
Okay. You're going to wave?
Wave.
Oh, wave. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you from back there. Michael Stone?
I'm going to wave also.
Okay. Lois Lacoste?
The only Lois. I was wondering if you said her name. Sorry. Good evening. My name is Lois Lacoste. I live at 6755 100 Acre Drive, Port St. John, Florida. I am present tonight requesting clarification from our Brevard County Commissioner Kurt Smith regarding this proposed amendment. It is my understanding that this proposed amendment to Section 106-1, Article 5, Pedestrian Safety Ordinance, only pertains to panhandling. Can I get an "I"?
You have the floor. Public comment.
Sheriff Wayne Ivy is in support of this amendment because it keeps panhandlers off street corners, out of traffic, and away from vehicles. Sheriff Ivy stressed to me that Brevard County has the highest rate of pedestrian deaths due to people on the streets and in traffic begging for money, food, and/or offering to clean your vehicle windshield. Sheriff Ivy said this amendment has nothing to do with restricting or banning flag-waving on street corners or along the side of streets, as long as you are not in the street. This amendment does, however, ban fill-the-boot charity because, again, they do not want citizens out in the street, walking from car to car, collecting donations for any organization, and the firefighters stopped doing "fill-the-boot" several years ago anyway. This amendment will only ban, restrict people from being in the street, interacting with vehicles and traffic. As long as we are off the roadway and/or on the sidewalk or curb, sign-waving is still allowed. That's my understanding. So because so many citizens are concerned our First Amendment rights are being infringed upon by banning our flag-waving, I would appreciate it if the Brevard County Commissioner would clarify and state they are in agreement with Sheriff Wayne Ivy's interpretation regarding this proposed amendment being passed. It is primarily to stop panhandling and not an amendment to stop our local flag-waving. Our infringement on our First Amendment rights, which little by little, bit by bit, piece by piece, are being taken from us, do not infringe upon our free speech. It's first been taken away from our Brevard County School Board, only allowing parents to speak for one minute now rather than the usual three minutes. And now I hope this proposed amendment does not infringe on our Brevard County Commissioners. So Commissioner Smith, can you clarify this for the people who are here in attendance that are worried about their First Amendment rights being stepped on? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Nathan Slusher? And after Nathan, it'll be Robert Klinkowski.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Slusher. I live at 860 Allendale Street up in Titusville. The first time this came up for advertisement, I came up here and I spoke on the possibilities of the unintended consequences of this ordinance, and I'm still very concerned with those possibilities. And I'm concerned how it's going to affect us in five, 10, or 20 years, because when laws are passed, and I believe sometimes it can be passed on good intent, such as this, if everyone believes in the mover's intent, however, when laws are interpreted and enforced in 10 years' time, the people reading the books do not get to see the intent of this room right now. They don't get to see what we're trying to do or who to help. All they see is the word-for-word that's on their page, and they have to interpret it. So I want to read to you a piece of what's in this, Section 106-200. While realizing that people interpreting this law will have no knowledge of this room, due to this threat, the board finds it reasonable and necessary to prohibit all individuals from standing, sitting, or remaining in the areas located on I-95, and prohibit any non-exempt individuals from standing, sitting, and remaining in the areas around the collector and arterial roads. With this ordinance description, there's no description for the areas surrounding. That's an issue for me. It's 100% subjective at that moment. Does that include sidewalks? Does that include easements? Do we have a legal description for the area surrounding, which is in Section 106-200? Section 106-203, prohibited acts, take a look at the word "either" before the number one, and the word "or" three words later. This "either/or" appears to create a double scenario in which I believe someone can misinterpret or intentionally interpret if they want, to create two situations where causes to be illegal. The first, where it becomes illegal to impact safe and efficient movement, fair. The second, where it becomes illegal to interfere with vehicular traffic in any lane. When I'm on the side of the road and I'm doing business advertising, or I'm sign-waving, the point is to interfere with the driver so they can see you and you impact their lives for the rest of the day, and they think about what your goal is. Or if you're having a car wash or an event like a car show, you want them to stop and turn into where you're at. I have been fortunate in my life and grateful to only live without a designated home for about one month out of my entire life, and I had friends and family give me a couch back then. Not everyone has this. Some, through their choices, some through bad luck, have incurred a position where charity is beneficial. These are Brevard County citizens. Taking away a source of income that is peaceful and consensual is both ethically wrong and unjustifiable, in my opinion. I have never been in a position where I have to stand on a Brevard County corner and pay for a roof over my head, as we heard in the last meeting. So I can't speak to that experience, but what I know is that we can't legislate poverty. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Klinkowski? And after Robert, Sandra Sullivan?
Good evening. Robert Klinkowski, Melbourne, Florida. I stand here in opposition against proposed amendment to Section 106 Brevard County Code pertaining to the safe use of public streets and the creation of a new article in Chapter 106 entitled Article 5 Pedestrian Safety Ordinance, providing for restrictions on individual standing, sitting, or remaining with certain areas located along on and off ramps of Interstate 95 and arterial and collector roads within Brevard County. We started out today, District 4 announced today as a national day of prayer, and it's not just to say blessed to that person, it's to give them alms. If a person's in need, you give. And here in Brevard County, we just heard Ms. Barbara Perry speak, and a bachelor's degree from Eastern Florida State College, and fell in hard times. We've heard these people before fall in hard times and come here and say, "Don't take this right away for them," to earn money from a person that wants to give it to them. If I want to give a dollar to somebody on the street, whether it be on a collector, arterial road, or interlock and drive, then I should be able to do it, and that person stood up a right to stay there and express their freedom of speech, either through symbolic expression, holding up a sign, or through saying, "I need money," because the homeless population, I believe, is rising, as we've seen through the COVID-19 pandemic and as we've continued to see in the last year. This problem isn't getting better, it's getting worse. And to do this, to find somebody up to $500 when obviously they don't have the money, is, I think, wrong, unethical, and we need to stop this. It takes it upon ourselves. We, as leaders, are held to a higher standard. I believe you all are leaders up there, and please stand against this, in opposition to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So as I read this ordinance, what I saw that was missing is data. There was lots of data in here, it's just not relevant to what is being proposed here. I've attended TPO meetings, as have you guys, and they have a Vision Zero program to reduce pedestrian fatalities. But I'm not seeing here how much is related to people being near an intersection, but when this item was introduced, you also said it prevents people from standing on the sidewalk. So how does being on a sidewalk cause an accident in an intersection? You talked about, they talked a lot about intersection crashes. From my understanding, most of those are people running red lights. And so when you're doing an analysis and you're putting down information, it's got to be relevant. So it seems to me that this particular ordinance should have gone before TPO. TPO collects all the data, and to have some analysis exactly pertaining to the risk of these areas. Where I live, Beachside, our accidents are being caused by, according to TPO meetings, a lack of sidewalks. And then there's that issue with the midway crosswalks, which are still yellow when red means stop. And our community has yelled and screamed, and has even tried to put through state legislation to change that. So in reading this, I think for most people have difficulty understanding the language of this. It's very confusing, and it gets into a gray area that I think a lot of people would get fines or be prosecuted and not be knowing where they should be at any given point in time. So I would urge you to say no to this. It's very convoluted, it's hard to understand, and it's hard for the everyday person to know what the intent is here. Thank you.
Thank you.[1270.38][1270.38](applause) All right, Commissioner Tobia? I don't have any other cards.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I do have a few questions, Commissioner Smith. You'll be happy to hear, I have no PowerPoint pictures, but I'm still a little concerned about the potential cost of this. I mentioned in 20, what, 2019, 2020, the average nightly stay in jail was around $66. 60 days, this goes up to, that's about four grand, plus the cost of the public defender and potentially the state attorney. So my question, in the past six weeks, have you reached out to the public defender, the state attorney, or the sheriff to give us a cost estimate of what the cost will be for the taxpayer, should we vote in favor of this?
I did not. Did you?
I voted against it, so I...
If you have, if you're asking me the question, and you're asking if I asked this sheriff or anybody else, you could have done the same thing. So I'm just asking you, I think that's a fair question.
That is accurate. I was working on other things, as you'll see in the rest of this, the rest of this agenda. But you mentioned this was safety. I got off the panhandling, so I went on the safety, and I went over the studies that you cited in the "whereas" clause. Just for refresher, that's pedestrian traffic fatalities by the state, signals for analytics by the Florida Traffic Safety Dashboard and Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization, the state of the system report. Commissioner Smith, have you read any of these studies or reports?
Well, I've glanced over them, but I couldn't recite them
Okay.
word for word.
That's fair. In your opinion, are these studies accurate? You mentioned them in the "whereas" clause. Do you trust the accuracy of the reports?
As far as they go, I have no reason to dispute them.
Okay. How many of these reports or databases that you cite offer the same suggestions to increase pedestrian safety that are actually mentioned in this ordinance?
I have no idea.
How many of the studies, again, that you are support?
Do you want to ask Abby? Because she's the one that primarily crafted this.
I'm getting here. I'll answer the question, I just wanted to see if you had an answer. But how many of these studies and reports cite pedestrian actions as the root cause of the problem? Okay.
How many do?
The answer to both is zero. My question is, do you think this ordinance penalizes the victim?
The victim? Who are you claiming to be the victim?
The people that are actually hit by the vehicles.
Well, the roadways are made for cars, and I've had these disputes with FDOT numerous times. They strive for zero fatalities, which then they'll turn around and they'll put a bicycle on a car in the same lane, and they'll have little caricatures that a bicyclist is allowed in the lane. That, to me, is absurd.
Okay. As you're aware or not, depending on how much you study these, the solutions to reduce pedestrian fatalities are enumerated in the very documents that you cite, pages 27 through 33. So I thought I'd quote some of them and ask you if they're in the...
Okay, so...
Or...
What's your point? I mean, we don't have to go...
I'm getting here. The point is, the very studies you have have solutions, and I want to find out if the solutions in the studies that you cited are actually in the ordinance. So let me go over these. Help me here if they're located. "Speed management appears to offer the greatest potential for pedestrian injury prevention." Is "speed management" mentioned in the ordinance?
I don't believe so.
It's not. "Installation of modern roundabouts," that's on page 27. Is that mentioned?
I don't believe that is either.
"Traffic calming techniques such as lane narrowing, adjustments in roadways,
So are you suggesting that I...
pedestrian refuge islands, and speed humps." Is that mentioned in the ordinance?
Are you suggesting that I should
I'm just...
petition for roundabouts?
I'm just going over the items that you cite, sir, and
Well, my purpose is...
this is all about safety, and this is what the experts are saying is safe, so I'm seeing if that's actually located in the ordinance, and so far, it's not. But there's more. Automated traffic enforcement, speeds, and red light cameras. Is that mentioned?
No.
No. Increased intensity of street lighting, is that?
I have no idea about that.
Okay, it's not. I read your ordinance as well. Adequately timed yellow and red light clearance traffic, page 28. Is that mentioned?
That may be. No?
No, it's not. "Light trucks, as well as passenger cars, can be made safer by installing automatic emergency braking systems that can detect and brake for pedestrians." That's on page 28. Is that mentioned?
And how is that relevant to this?
It's relevant because these are the studies that you are citing. They give recommendations for safety, right? You cited these, you say it's about safety, this is what the experts are saying is safe. So...
So are you suggesting that we, how do we install the automatic braking to all these people's cars without costing the government a lot, a lot of money?
Commissioner Smith, yours...
I'm looking for a solution to prevent these people...
And there are solutions in here.
Well, yeah, there's...
And you haven't given one by the experts that you cite, sir.
And how would I, how would I get anybody to do that, any of those? How would I, or this commission, or this county, or the representatives that represent this county, cause those things to be instituted to save a life?
Sir, you brought...
We can save, we can save lives doing this, and we don't have to get into all that.
Sir, the experts disagree.
Is that true?
The experts disagree.
Is that true? Tell me.
I'm not, I'm not taking your word for it, absolutely not. I'm going with what the experts said.
I'm just, I'm just saying, use some common sense.
Okay, I think we can probably move on.
I'm moving on, okay.
I think you got your point.
Thank you. Let me go to exceptions, oh, sorry, exemptions. First of all, I want to thank you for making a correction or an addition here, or Abby making it. On page seven, you made, you added "any bus or public transit system" as an exemption, so I want to say thank you very much. We could have potentially cited everyone getting on public transportation for this before you made the correction. But my question is this, Commissioner Smith, as a successful businessman, did you ever think about private transportation?
In regard to what?
An exemption, sir.
Well, I'm leaving...
It's a yes or no?
No, it is not.
Okay.
Yes or no? I left that up to Abby. I saw an issue, and I went to her, and then she worked with the sheriff, and that's what we've come up with.
Okay, so my question is this. According to the draft ordinance that you have here, again, you've taken out getting on a public transportation, but my question is private transportation, such as Uber or Lyft, or a little more old-school, maybe, a taxi cab. Did you exempt out taxi cabs?
From what? We're talking about intersections here with...
Sir, page seven, right here, this is your words...
Medians, and people standing in the median,
Sir, you're...
They're at risk.
Sir...
What you're bringing up here has nothing to do with those people standing in a median.
You're 100% incorrect. Here, you exempt out, and we can ask Abby this, would you like to punt this over to Abby?
Sure.
Abby, did we exempt out public transportation buses on page seven? Or, sorry, did you do it? I think it's nine, "any bus or public transit system." Is that in there, page seven?
That is correct. That is based off of review that we have done of other ordinances that have been enacted in the state of Florida. That was one of the exemptions we saw other entities using.
Would you agree that Uber or Lyft are private corporations?
They are private corporations.
Publicly traded but private corporation?
They are private corporations.
My question, would you believe, is your understanding of this... My question, would you believe, is your understanding of this, would that be covered under here, Uber, Lyft, or a limousine?
As far as the public transit, I think we were intending to-
I understand the intent of this.
Yes.
We're not saying, we're not saying the word. But my question is, is how about Uber or Lyft? Would they be covered? A limousine, maybe? I don't ride in limousines, but if I did, would that be covered?
It would not be, I mean, as long as they're not part of the public transit system or bus system.
Yeah, my understanding is not. So Commissioner Smith, was this an intentional oversight?
It's not an oversight by me.
You brought this up, sir. We can't blame Abby for this. Do you think there could be other oversights, intentional or not?
Are you going to vote for this?
I'm, I'm not done yet. You brought this up, sir. So, so my question is this, this is what it comes down to. This is the last question here, so, so bear with me. Clearly, the experts have spoken, and you've taken a completely different path on this, completely different. You have that ability as a, as a policymaker. But my question is this. If for some reason that the experts are actually right, and you are wrong, and there's no impact on public safety on the legislation that's located in this ordinance, we empirically show that, again, the experts are right, or, or at least this ordinance is wrong, are you willing to put a sunset on this so there will be no potential cost to taxpayers for the incarceration or the prosecution of the folks that may run afoul of this ordinance?
So what would you suggest the sunset before? Just in five years, it just automatically goes away? Or in five years, if you're not happy with it, it goes away?
Let me be very clear, and if you haven't picked up on this, I'm not very happy with it right now.
Gee, I never would have guessed.
Okay, and, and I don't think, you know, the point is, I don't think Uber drivers are very happy. I don't think people that like the First Amendment are very happy. I don't think homeless people are happy. But, but that's here nor there. My question is this. We look at the number of accidents that have taken place. You've cited many of them, right? A year later, we come back, and we look at, assuming this passes, we look to see if those numbers have decreased. If those numbers have decreased, you are 100% correct, and these experts that you cited are wrong. You know what? Let's continue this forward. But you know what? If we make these changes that have costs, financial costs, and you mentioned this, not me, that it's all about safety, I'm taking your word on this one, and the number of fatalities does not go down, are you willing to say maybe this ordinance is ill-advised, and it did not work, and maybe we should sunset it? We look at the numbers. As a businessman, we find out something is not working, maybe we try something else. Are you, are you willing to put a sunset on this?
I would consider it, but your, your examples here are far-fetched because-
They're not mine. They're, they're, they're the experts that you put-
No. This, we're, we're citing a specific instance here. We're concerned about the safety of people standing in medians. So if nobody dies, are you saying it worked or it didn't work? They might not have died had there been people out there. But I can tell you that the, the, the chances of somebody dying in an intersection are far greater if they're standing there than if they're standing on a corner or a sidewalk. Would you agree with that?
I'm agreeing with what the expert that you said-
Would you agree with that? I just asked you some-
I'm not, I'm not an expert. I'm not an expert.
Common sense. Just use a little common sense.
If you use common sense, this wouldn't have been brought up.
That's not true. Your common sense, maybe.
Commissioner Tobias, so if you don't vote for it, or you vote against it, and someone dies, are you liable, or is it your fault because you didn't put the ordinance in place? I mean, you're asking him the same logic, because I don't know how you measure-
Wait, let's, let's rewind. Say that again?
If, if someone dies, and you voted no on the ordinance, or it doesn't pass, or whatever, do you bear some of that responsibility for not passing it?
As death, for someone getting hit by a car?
For someone in the street, someone in the street.
But there is no evidence-
I'm saying, that's how silly-
That this will solve the safety issue.
Answer the question.
But that's how silly, that's how silly that some of your analogies are, because you're looking at a study that specifically addresses. Did they study people in the median? Was that part of that study?
I'm not, Madam Chair, I'm not looking at the study. This is the study that the author of this brought up, Madam Chair.
I get it. I get it. I do.
You may get it. The sponsor does not.
I just think it's, I think we've probably heard it out.
I get what you're going for, but I don't agree with it.
Okay. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, ma'am. I know we are honored to have Ms. Georgiana Gillette here with us, head of TPO. And I was wondering if you would maybe see if she would come up and speak to us on some of these safety issues in her overview.
She wants to jump into the fire.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Commissioner Tobias, I really do appreciate you bringing up all those countermeasures, the roundabouts, and, you know, all of the things that are so important from an engineering standpoint. You are absolutely right. But I just want to say, our interest is in traffic safety. We do know that pedestrians are the most vulnerable road users. We know that for a fact. I'm not going to talk a lot about the statistics. I know Ms. Moody talked about it. You have many of the statistics in the ordinance. But what I can tell you, they're huge. And every year, they, they shock. Kim Smith has been doing this for many, many years as our Bicycle and Pedestrian Education and Safety Coordinator. We're really shocked at times at how large these numbers are. And so for just one road user, it may seem like a small percentage each year, but it is a large number of fatalities. And that's what really scares us the most. You know, in 2019, the, the TPO did adopt Vision Zero. Commissioner Smith, you mentioned that. And it's something our governing board said, listen, our goal is zero for serious injuries and fatalities. A lot of folks say, well, that's absolutely impossible. The future makes everything possible. You know, safety is not just DOT's problem to solve. We all have to be pulling in the same direction, the county, each one of our cities. And so it's going to take every one of us. We all have to be doing the right thing. There are times when it's the pedestrian that's at fault, and there are times when it is the motorist that did something illegally and hit the pedestrian and killed it, killed the pedestrian. So, you know, it's unfortunate. We all have a personal responsibility to be doing the, the right thing and taking care of each other. And I would just say, we really do ourselves a disservice by being at the top of these national lists for pedestrian fatalities. Florida was number one in the nation for several years. Brevard County was number three in the nation, and we have gotten better. I think we're number four now. So we, I know that we've talked a lot about statistics, but that, you know, it's more than statistics. These are our friends. These are our family. And anything that we can do to improve that, we are 100%, you know, we're going to continue to work to do everything we can, and, and we, we need, you know, we need everyone's help in doing that. We appreciate our law enforcement partners. They're a big part of it. Engineering, putting in the right engineering solutions is important. Education is important. But again, at the end of the day, our citizens are a big part of this as well. We all have to be doing the right thing. So I do appreciate your time.
I, I just have one question. So, and this is a hypothetical, obviously, but if a Lyft dri, if somebody's standing in the middle of an intersection, and they're on the narrow little median, and somebody gets distracted by their cell phone, or they're messing with the radio, and let's say the person is an Uber driver, and they clip this person that's standing there, and that person's dead, versus somebody that dropped a cigarette and reached for it and swerved and killed the person, but it's not a Lyft driver, it's just an everyday person on their way to work, and kills that, kills somebody, is that person just as dead?
I would say so.
Yeah, I think so, too. Thank you.
Commissioner Tobias, do you have a question for?
Yeah, I don't know how to follow that one, but thank you so much for the work that you do. Is this your report?
It certainly is. Yes, sir.
Can you help me-
I will do my best.
-anywhere in the over 150 pages that I, I wasted printing? You said you're, you're looking for safety. It's, and here, Vision Zero. I really appreciate that.
It's our number one priority. Yes, sir.
Super. So I'm sure you have, you've looked at this plan, and I'm sure lots of the ideas located in this ordinance, if this is your number one, are located in this, in this plan right here, this, these 200 pages here, 180 pages?
Some of the statistics was pulled.
Not, not, not the statistics, because we've heard that over and over. Solutions, right?
Solutions.
Solutions. Because hopefully you're more than an organization that provides statistics. I've got those. I've got federal, and I've got state. So my question is, is the solutions that Commissioner Smith has come to, are they located anywhere in your plan here, anywhere?
They're not called out in the plan, no.
Any one of, any one of the ones, any one, there's a single one?
No, sir.
Is that, is yes or no?
No, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
Do you want to finish your comment, please?
I would just say that, you know, the ordinance is, is very specific. It's not going into detail concerning any of the engineering improvements that, you know, we work with Brevard County Public Works to do, all of the, you know, the 16 cities in Brevard County. You know, and it doesn't call out, you know, any of the, the law enforcement, all the work that they do. So, you know, we can go very deep in all of the solutions. You're, you're right. The ordinance is just very, you know, it's just about the statistics and, and about pedestrians. So it doesn't go into that level from the State of the System Report that we produce every year.
Madam Chair, one quick follow-up. Thank you. Should we, and I, I think this is going to pass, but my question, you, you probably know more about this, you definitely know more about this than I do. Do you think we will see in a year's time less fatalities because of this ordinance right here?
It's just impossible for me to answer that question. I'm sorry. I, I just, I don't know.
So you can't, you can't say that this will lower the number of fatalities?
We're doing so many things throughout the county in so many different levels. You know, to say that, that one thing would make a difference, I hope so. But it's just impossible for me to say that, you know, emphatically, 100%.
Well, it's impossible for you to know if, if somebody wasn't killed. How would you know that this ordinance saved a life? Because you wouldn't know if, you just don't know.
And Commissioner Smith, you bring up a very good point. We have to dig into the data. There is so much of these crash reports that, you know, just this year, we really have to dig into it. We, we think that we know distracted driving. We've, just this year, we looked at a lot of those statistics for pedestrian fatalities, and distracted driving was big. So that, you know, people need to be paying attention to what they're doing. And if a pedestrian were to walk out in front of them, if they were paying attention to it, you would hope that they would be able to react. That's not always the case. So-
Madam Chair, my, my question is this. Thank you. You mentioned distracted driving as a cause to these pedestrian-
It's one of them.
That's fine. I get it. Not arguing. Help me here. Why would we penalize the pedestrians when you just said one of the causes was the drivers? Can you explain that inconsistency to me?
Well, I will, I will tell you, it's both. There have been many reports that we have looked at, that a pedestrian is not doing what they're supposed to be doing. You know, we all have a responsibility. They'll walk out in the middle of the road. They'll jaywalk. They don't wait until they, you know, push a crosswalk button to, to make that. So there's a lot going on.
Are those already covered in statute? Jaywalking and-
Sure, sure. Yes.
Okay. So again, we, we got that covered.
Mm-hmm.
Not arguing against that. I think those are wonderful. Why are we penalizing, again, the people that you just said were some of the cause of this? This goes back to, are we penalizing the victim here?
Well-
That's where I was going with that.
Yes. Commissioner, I, our number one focus is safety. You know, I, I personally am not advocating for or against this ordinance. I know, you know, all of the Commissioners up here, they understand what the TPO is trying to do in, in regards to pedestrian safety. It's another component, for sure. We're here to, to just say that if we're all pulling in the, in the same direction to improve those statistics, and if we think that this is going to be one way to do that, then-
Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, ma'am. I think your expert wanted to come over and say a few things.
I would love, Kim is the expert.
Are you okay with that, Madam Chair?
Sure.
I just have one really, oh, Kim Smith, Space Coast TPO, Vision Zero Project Manager. I have just one quick comment. About 23 years of, of doing bicycle pedestrian education. One thing that I do know is the chances of a pedestrian being hit greatly increase if they're in the road. And if they linger in the road, those percentages and those chances only go up. And I think that that's kind of the underlying intent of what's trying to happen here, is you're trying to keep folks out of the road. Doesn't matter if they're in an intersection. More time you spend in the roadway, the more ti, or the higher the chance you're going to get a hit. And of all the statistics that have been put out tonight, and I hate talking about statistics when we're talking about human lives, because they're just numbers, 1.8 for the last five years, 1.8% of our crashes were pedestrians, total, total crashes were pedestrians, 36% of our fatalities. So there are only less than 2% of all of our crashes, but they represent 36% of our fatalities. And I think those are the things that we need to keep in mind tonight.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Kim, TPO, a lot of people might not even know what TPO is. It's Transportation Planning Organization.
Yes, sir.
What are some of the purposes of the TPO?
That's probably a better question for Georgiana. But long-range traffic planning, anything from the start of when a new road is going to be, or widened, or improvements, everything up until construction, getting funding for those particular projects, and that's the basic, long-range traffic planning.
And would you say safety is part of that?
Safety is the number one priority.
Okay, thank you.
Georgiana?
Madam Chair, one quick question?
I have Rita next, and then I have you.
Well, okay. This was for the current speaker.
Okay. Go ahead.
One, one quick. You said safety was number one priority. My question is this. Do you, as a member of the TPO, endorse this ordinance for safety?
I'm not going to take a stance on the ordinance. We just want to, we want to save lives.
Thank you.
And that takes everything that you've mentioned, all those countermeasures.
I appreciate it.
Plus, anything else we can come up with.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah. Would it be possible to get Sheriff Ivy or Ms. Moody back up here to ask a couple of questions? I, um, when we started looking at this, it's not to ever restrict somebody from being able to get charity or to block their freedom of speech. Sheriff Ivy, are non-motorized vehicles allowed on the road?
Which roads are you talking about?
Let's say US 1, I-95. Because from what I remember, I thought non-motorized vehicles weren't allowed on there unless they were tagged, right? So you couldn't just...
So if you were talking about a bicycle, I mean, you could have bicycle lanes, so I think depending on what area you're talking about, or what specific roadways you're talking about, depends on what type of vehicle can travel on it. There are certain roadways in Brevard County that you can't take a motorized vehicle on, like an ATV or golf cart, so it just kind of depends on...
Why would you do that? Why would you restrict it?
Well, we're trying to protect citizens.
Yeah.
And the whole question that came up, she just answered up here. When you look at, when you look at the percentages of people that are hit in, as a pedestrian, the longer they're in that intersection, that's what this is all about. I mean, that summation was really the truth. And, you know, somebody asked earlier about cost of putting in roundabouts and all this other stuff. I think we all know the costs that are associated with that. I think we also all know the difficulties of putting together the budget that we have here in Brevard County and trying to accomplish the things we're doing. Question came up, what's, you know, what's the cost going to be at the jail? My question is this, what's the cost of a human life? Can we put a dollar figure on that?
Yeah. And, you know, I was thinking, we can either be proactive or reactive. And if we sunset this later, if something didn't work, or we make some tweaks, I'm fine with that, too. I just, you know, when we start putting this in, there's times I'm driving down the road, people are so close to the road, and it's really dangerous the way I drive. But it's just, it's uncomfortable. And I got to tell you, too, as a female, I don't know about how the rest of you ladies feel, when I pull up to an intersection, I'm sitting there and somebody is approaching me that I know can take me, it's not a comfortable feeling. I don't mind approaching people to give them stuff, but I don't like big guys coming towards me. It's just not a comfortable thing.
Yes, ma'am.
So there's some things that protect everybody on this, and trying to get everybody in with some protection, but even, my sister hit somebody accidentally driving, and it took her forever to get over that.
I think one thing that would be helpful for those that do have a concern about this is if our legal advisor can say what the actual prohibitions are to this.
Okay.
And then, before she does that, I'm going to say, this is, should this ordinance pass, this is not an immediacy where we are going to start enforcing this tomorrow. There's going to be an education and awareness component that goes with this, where we're educating the public on what this ordinance does, how it impacts both drivers, passengers, anybody in the intersections, that type of thing. So the education and awareness component will be vital in saving lives. It'll be vital in making sure that we minimize how much we have to actually enforce this ordinance from it. So we'll be doing that as a part of this, as we go along.
And there's target areas, too, where this is going to be enforced. So like, if it's in front of a shopping center, it's not going to make any difference. I mean, because that's where people get picked up by the Ubers and not so much the Walmart intersections. So just try to get that perspective from what I read through with this, and I know the intent and the heart of this. So thank you, sir, and I'm going to be quiet and let you all finish.
So I did want to mention, and I'm glad you all brought this up, and this, I think, goes to Commissioner Tobias' questions. I did speak with City of Melbourne to find out how their ordinance had been working, whether they found it beneficial. He did agree that it was certainly beneficial for the officers. It gives them a tool to educate. They spent months just educating the public by handing out flyers that they had produced, explaining the dangers. They didn't cite anybody, they didn't arrest anybody, they didn't give anyone court dates. They literally handed like 2,500 flyers out to educate people, which I know the sheriff intends to do as well. In the time that their ordinance has been in effect, which has been since August of 2021, they have cited 12 pedestrians and two motorists. Now, their ordinance does allow for the citing of motorists, the county ordinance does not. Of that, there have been five guilty verdicts in that. I believe the state dropped five of the charges. There's one withhold of adjudication, and three of the cases are still pending. The numbers, and I think the sheriff could tell you, too, a deputy is going to give warnings, they're not going to immediately take somebody to jail. It's a tool to move people out of dangerous locations. And with education, the goal is to move people out of the dangerous intersections, those highly trafficked intersections, where speed is high, volume is high, and it creates a safety risk. To answer the other question about the prohibited acts, this truly prohibits, and there is an "and" there, and it is a very important "and" that I think people were confusing or thinking it might be an "or," but you have to occupy the sidewalk, arterial or collector road, traffic median sidewalks, bicycle lanes, or on or off ramps of I-95. And, so it's not just enough to occupy it, a deputy couldn't cite somebody for occupying it. You then have to interfere with traffic. So a deputy or an officer has to see that interference with traffic that impacts the safe or efficient movement of vehicular traffic within any lane of the travel for any reason other than those exemptions that were discussed, or if you're exchanging any physical item. And those are the, that's the type of conduct that does create the safety risk, that creates the distracted driver that was mentioned by the commission. So those are, those are the concerns. It certainly is narrowly tailored specifically to address just that very narrow conduct, certainly only a part of the tools to make our roads safer, but certainly an important part of the full puzzle to create safe roads in Brevard County, and is one way that is low-cost and doesn't require constructing anything. And once people are educated, is truly a preventative crime, where some crimes are, some crimes are, you know, meant to be sort of punitive in nature. This is a preventative option that, once the public understands what they cannot do, the goal would be that people don't participate in that type of conduct anymore, so.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Moody, for exploiting the education component. Can you help me here? I've got a little bit of an issue here.
I will certainly try.
Help me. You're educating folks by handing out flyers at intersections, letting them know?
That is what Melbourne did.
Isn't that the very act that you're trying to prevent?
So, well, not to...
Isn't it do as I say, not as I do?
No, actually, because pedestrian...
Let me address Elvis Costello here for a minute. I'm sorry, Commissioner Tobias.
He's in the Hall of Fame.
Yeah, he should have kept that hat in the Hall of Fame. So what we will do is, anybody we see in those capacities, we will have them get out of the intersection, go to a safe environment, safe for them and safe for our deputies, safe for the pedestrians, or passengers, or people driving. Then we will try and do the education, give them the information, not out in the middle of the street, all right? That's the whole goal of this, is to get them out of the middle of the street.
Got it. Madam Chair, one follow-up. And as an attorney, Ms. Moody, you can help me here. Page seven, I mentioned this, I'm a big fan of Uber, though I don't own any shares. It specifically says, number nine, entering or exiting any bus or public transit system. In your opinion, as an attorney, does this, does this cover private companies such as Lyft, Uber, and limousines?
So I would say as long as the pickup was not impeding the safe and efficient flow of traffic, I would say those are systems, my interpretation would be those are systems intended to transfer public people, those are generally strangers to each other if you're having an Uber driver or Lyft driver pick you up. So that is public transportation of a certain form. I understand it's commercial, I understand it's a business, and it's not publicly funded transportation necessarily, but I wouldn't, I do not believe the intent would be to criminalize getting into a vehicle that you are getting into as a public transit system.
Oh, I understand what the intent is. My question is, so you believe that this would exempt out Uber drivers as either a bus or a public transit system? Is that your opinion as an attorney? An Uber is a, or a limousine, is a bus or a public transit?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I did not say that. No, I said if a person is getting into a vehicle that is intended to transfer public citizens, that, and they are not impeding the safe flow of traffic, that this ordinance wouldn't apply to that type of situation. And I don't know why I...
Why would we include, why would we then include a bus or a public transit system anyway? So I don't understand why we would, and I know you didn't write this, but you are an attorney, and I'm just trying to get your interpretation of this. Why would we include one and not the other?
So buses, don't they have a lot of signage on them, big flashing arrows that warn people there's pedestrians about?
Including one individual over here to the ride with Jim.
I mean, that's how buses are designed, to make the traffic flow aware that they're stopping to pick up a passenger. Have you ridden in a Lyft that has that? I'm just curious, because I've never had.
Have I ridden in a Lyft?
Yeah, that has that kind of signage on the back of it, safety lights and everything else. I've never ridden in one like that. I'd like to see them.
And I've never ridden in, no, I don't, I generally don't take public transit system, an Uber or a Lyft user.
They're very safe, that's why they have all the signage on them, to warn people that the bus is coming to a stop and that they'll be picking up passengers.
Okay, so it's your interpretation that buses, since they have safety warnings, are okay, but Uber and Lyft, since they don't, as you say, would not be okay?
You were inquiring why buses were in there, not Ubers and Lifts.
But from your explanation...
I was just simply asking you, do they have them?
But from your explanation, buses are safer, right? Because they have signage. So they're included. Wouldn't we want to include, as an attorney, wouldn't we want to include the ones that are less obvious as an exemption?
You all are the commission, obviously, this is your product.
Okay.
So I'm just here to answer questions from, you know, a safety standpoint on behalf of the sheriff's office. As to the drafting, I mean, if that was something that you provided input for, I mean, I think the key is, any vehicle picking up an individual should certainly be following the safety of the roadways, traffic signals, traffic signage. So if you can't achieve that in a safe manner, and you're driving an Uber, I would say you should be picking up your passenger not in the middle of an arterial or collector roadway or intersection.
One more, and our illustrious chairwoman has a wonderful electric vehicle that has the ability for something called smart summons, where the vehicle actually picks you up. Technology is an amazing thing. Can you explain how that situation, if I called my car to pick me up, is technology would do? And that impeded, would you, in essence, be the driver, I guess, of that car and the pedestrian?
Is it going to pick you up in the intersection?
Right. I don't know why this car would be driving to one of the prohibited areas, a collector road, an arterial road. I'm not sure, I'm not sure how Commissioner Zonka would have gotten out to the middle of the on-ramp or off-ramp of I-95 to have her car summoned to her there.
I don't know how I got brought up in the middle of this to begin with.
I'm a little confused.
I cannot summon my car, just for the record. Some of us can't afford $12,000 of software.
Listen, I don't know how we shoot rockets to space, but you know what? Rockets go to space. They go to space from this very county.
I can't make your scenario...
But you know what? We're going to launch them from the middle of an intersection.
Yeah. I don't find your scenario in the prohibited acts in this statute. I don't see how that would occur.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Smith, did you have questions, or have you completely forgotten?
No, I'm good.
Eight hours later.
Thanks for being, I just wanted to point out that when I spoke to Wayne about this, he said this is very important to save lives. And his exact words, "This is our goal, not to drag folks off to jail. We want to save lives. We don't want to drag people off to jail, and we don't want to see them get hit and killed. We don't want to see them get hit and injured." And you can't argue with me that if somebody bumps you, if you're in the middle of an intersection and somebody bumps you with a car, that you're not going to get hurt. Let's hope that you only get hurt. But the likelihood is that we don't win many battles, we, the humans, win many battles when we're arguing with the front end or side of a car. So that's what this is all about, it's about safety. And I just want to make one point. I'm really encouraged that Commissioner Tobias has leaned so heavily on the TPO, the Transportation Planning Organization. And I'm not going to embarrass and ask him how many meetings of the TPO that he is a member of that he's attended in the last seven and a half years. I won't embarrass him to ask that question.
Madam Chair, can I answer that?
Yeah, unfortunately, my opponent lied last one and said I'd showed up to three. I'd actually only shown up to one. And clearly, there's good reason when we get 200 pages of zero fatalities, but they don't do the work, or the commissioner doesn't lead out to the work to find out actually how to achieve that zero. So the answer, the answer is one, and it's six and a half years, and I hope to go another year and a half and not make it. But I want to be honest, one.
You will last another year and a half if you don't stand in a median.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Commissioner, we trust and value the information they give us, and you have us to rely on to try and keep people safe, not Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you. We all thank you, including Commissioner Tobias. We all thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Moody, thank you, Sheriff. Now, Georgiana, I'll keep it quick, I promise, and then I'm going to call the question, because a lot of this is, we're going in circles.
Yes.
I just, you know, I don't know that we could ever put you on the spot, because you are, you know, a county employee and the TPO, you...
They're brand new.
You work as a representative for the board, appointed by the board, so I wouldn't ask your staff to say that either, but do you believe that there's a good possibility this ordinance will make pedestrians safer?
Well, sure.
Okay. And can you give us a little bit of your background, your education, how long you've worked for the Transportation Planning Organization?
So I come from the Florida Department of Transportation. I worked for DOT for 18 years, and I came on to the Space Coast TPO in 2010. And so became the director, replaced Mr. Bob Com in 2018. So transportation has definitely been my life. And again, we just, safety, it's about saving lives. That is the number one thing that we want to do. But we, you know, the other thing that is most important is bringing in that federal money into Brevard County. It's good for economics, it's good for safety, it's good for quality of life. It's about bringing in transportation dollars into Brevard County. But, you know, we have to have a safe, multimodal transportation system. And, you know, we're connected on so many different levels. And so I think, again, if we're all pulling in the same direction, we're putting in those engineering improvements, our law enforcement is such a tremendous partner, all of the cities, but especially Sheriff Ivy and his team, I think that we are going to really make strides in improving safety here in Brevard County.
And can you just state one more time the number of pedestrian fatalities and our ranking statewide and nationwide, please?
So the numbers that I have here, and I have so many different statistics, well, let's just, 2021, the fatalities in 2021 was 102. 26 of those were pedestrians. That is one of the largest numbers that we have seen, and that is huge. In 2022, I believe it's 26 fatalities, 11 of which are pedestrians. That's 44%. That is huge.
And that's Brevard County, correct?
That is Brevard County, yes.
Please don't speak out.
And that's only in four months.
Yes, that's in four months.
And it's 25 total fatalities and 11 pedestrians.
Yeah, out of the 20, yes, out of the 25 fatalities in 2022, 11 of them are pedestrians.
Okay, thank you so much.
And that was a 82%.
All right. All right, I'm going to call the question on this, unless the commission has anything else further.
Please do.
All right, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 3-1.
You voted no.
Sorry to...
That's a shocker.
All right. Do you want, cards, do you want a quick break? Five minutes?
We're going to do a quick five-minute break, because I've got a lot of cards on the next couple of items, so.
Each two? You have a lot of cards?
Yeah.
Oh, that's shocking. I do.
All right. Item H2.
Is that my cue?
That is your cue, sir.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair and the Board. This is the first of two public hearings. This is a development agreement for the Cedar Lakes LLC, located in District One, more specifically in Port St. John. The relevance of this agreement is per our ordinance under 62608, the concurrency evaluation. Whenever a treatment plant is at over 85 percent capacity, the, any development coming in is required to, in phases, do a development of taking up more, no more than 25 percent of the remaining capacity. Cedar Lakes LLC requested that that be waived, in the sense that they could do the 144 development all in one phase. And in doing so, we developed a development agreement, which both sides are good with. However, this is the first of two meetings in order to go through the process.
All right, Commissioner Pritchett.
Mr. Fontaine, we typically don't hear these, but we have to, because we are already at 85 percent capacity, correct?
That is correct. So the, the rationale of this is, them coming in for a site plan, they're limited on the, the 25 percent of the remaining capacity rule. So the purpose of this is to do a developers' agreement, which, again, according to our rules, requires the two hearings and the public notices, which in the attachments for the agenda show the due diligence of us following all the state laws in order for that.
Thank you, sir. And, and we wouldn't do this if it puts us over capacity, correct?
We would not.
Thank you.
Okay. Danielle Langley?
My name's Danielle Langley, and I live at 520 Clearview Drive. I'm actually basically here out of concern. The previous, we listened to a lot about safety, human safety, basically traffic-wise, but my concern here this evening is human health safety. As I was reading through a lot of research that I was doing, it has a lot to do with people's safety as far as health. There's increased symptoms with headaches, nervous system, tiredness, concentration, respiratory issues, skin disease, I can keep going on. There are mood swings, there's higher gastroenterology symptoms. It's basically an aerosol. And although there are issues that present themselves to the workers, that is a problem. Then, when they take their job, they get paid for that. But that's not an option for the residents. I mean, this is just being dumped in their backyard, and we'd be right there within the 500 feet that borders this plant. And that's, that's quite a thing. I mean, there's, that picture that we received is, that's a lot of residents right there, and a lot of elderly residents. And I really think that that is quite the health risk for them, especially when you're talking 70 years old. My mom's 70. And that's, that's quite a health risk. So I wish that you all would really take that into consideration, because she's not getting paid. She's not working there. She lives there. She owns that home. And you guys are putting their health at risk severely. Thank you.
Thank you. Judith Powell?
Hi. You're going to have to forgive me, I'm not a public speaker.
You'll be great.
I do live there, and I am 70. And most of that street are elderly people. And most of those people have bought that property. I get up at 4 o'clock in the morning, and I go to work every day. I come home every night. We have a power plant right on the left of us, and now they want to put the water plant right all the way around us. We're already at risk with the power plant, who is already extended all the way down the street. Now they're putting in the water, the waste of water. And, you know, I worked hard for my property, just as you people did. You know? I mean, I picked that spot because it was quiet, it was secluded, nobody bothered you. It, it just seemed like a good place to live at the time. But now, these utilities keep coming in and taking more, and taking more, and taking more. What about our rights as people? I mean, we earned this property, we worked for it, we, we go to work every day, you know? And we're not young people anymore. I really hope that you'll take that into consideration, that maybe someday your parents will be in a position like this. You know, that you, that you have homes, and that you don't want to lose your homes. We can't sell them, because they're not going to be worth anything as soon as this word gets out. Nobody's going to want to buy, so we can't even sell our home. And right now, with the prices and the economics what they are, I can't move anywhere. You know, I'm going to wind up homeless. You know, it, it's ridiculous. It's not fair. I mean, I, I understand that, you, you have to grow, I understand all that, but there are other, other places, that a whole bunch of people aren't living. And these people have started from, from absolutely nothing and built up their homes. We have a man at the top of the street that, that's elderly, and he's, he goes out there every day. He's out there every day taking care of his lawn, he's, he takes care of his home. We're trying to make ourselves a life. And we can't do that with these utilities keep coming in and taking over and taking over. It's just, it's not fair. And there's nothing, we have no alternatives. I mean, it's not like we can, we have a lot of money and we can pick up and move. We're living in mobile homes because we don't have a lot of money, because that was all we could buy at the time. But these, but people have rights, and it seems like you people are the only ones that can protect us. We've already, we're already under stress and probably severe medical issues from the electric company. They've moved all the way from across the street, down the street, and now they've expanded all the way down the back. And now we've got the water company coming in wanting to put a water treatment plant in there, with more medical issues coming up. You know, I don't know. It doesn't leave me anywhere to go. It doesn't leave me anything to do. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Moya?
Hi, good evening. I'm supposed to be Kim Rosanka, but I'm clearly not. So I just want to assure the public that we are not building a treatment plant here. We are not building a utility plant. We are building a single-family residential development, and requesting that we be able to connect to the public sewer, and, which is the safest option we have, that will, that will have no safety degrading of the area. We will not go on septic tank, we will connect to the public sewer, which is extremely safe. So I think there may be a little misunderstanding, that in no way, in shape, or form are we building a utility or a utility plant. We just want to go ahead and connect to the county sewer, and we want to connect the entire project to the county sewer, which is why we have to have this agreement. So we're going to pay a lot of money upfront to do this, to get the capacity that is available, to ensure that we can fully develop our project that was approved by this board a few months ago. So it's, it's a very simple agreement to connect to public sewer, and just to allow us to exceed the 25 percent.
Commissioner Pritchett, do you have questions?
And I'm here to answer any questions, if you have.
Yeah. I just want to say that we're not going to let a treatment plant go on this property. Ladies, you got some bad information. So that is not going to-
Lemon, I understand.
Yeah, there's not a treatment plant, it's, it's a housing development going in right there. So you got it. No treatment plant right there. Yes. And Mr. Moya, thank you for, for hooking up and not putting in septic tanks, and so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Sullivan?
Good afternoon, Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So my concern, we have two plants, which are at or near capacity. We have this St. John, Port St. John, at 85 percent, and we have South Beach's plant at 86 percent. And we have impact fees, which have not been updated in 15 years. So the burden of the cost for the added infrastructure, to add another plant, it's about $50 million, probably more now. And that burden is going to be on the residents of Brevard to do, to do growth without managed growth, and without, the way that we're moving forward is the burden, the taxpayers, with that cost of that infrastructure. And I'm going to, I've brought this point up, I think, about now four times to this board. And I'm going to ask you guys to consider again to update impact fees. Things today cost much more than they did even a year ago, or two years ago. But to not have those impact fees updated in 15 years or more, particularly transportation, which came before you in 2016, and that one was rejected, to do an impact fee study, and find out what it's going to cost the county, and do proactive management versus reactive management. Because you approve projects like this, and these also impact the lagoon. Because we know, just a few years ago, that because of INI, influx and infiltration, when there's a storm event, that puts those plants over capacity, when they're at 85, 86 percent. Guess where those discharges go? 22 million gallons of sewage into the Indian River Lagoon. So you are burdening taxpayers to pay to save our lagoon, and then you make irresponsible decisions here on the dais, adding more capacity to sewage plants when they're at or near capacity. Thank you very much.
Motion to approve?
Commissioner Pritchett? Motion to approve?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H3?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. This is Amendment to Chapter 2 of the Brevard County Code of Ordnances Regarding Uniform Advisory Boards. In addition to the changes previously discussed at the prior board meeting pursuant to the board's direction, revisions were made to the attendance requirements. The ordinance now provides that any appointee who is absent 50 percent of any four consecutive advisory board meetings that take place after their appointment shall be dismissed from their appointment to the advisory board unless excused by the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, I have several cards on this. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah. Commissioner Tobias, I have one request. I ran this by the county manager, Ms. Abigail. From what we talked about the other day, I think would better serve us if we say any appointee who is absent one half of the scheduled meetings for the calendar year. That way, as soon as they miss those in the beginning, because there's going to be a couple boards where the county manager is going to allow them to meet six times instead of four. So if you guys are good with that, I talked to them, and actually, the county manager helped me come up with that terminology right there. So instead of saying 50 percent of the first four meetings, it would say half of the scheduled meetings for the calendar year. So as soon as they miss half of their meetings, it's, they're off their board. So if it's four and two, then-
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that's better than what was presented here. I fully support that. It was a complete oversight on my fault, on my, on my part, and so that is a definite friendly amendment, one that I hope we can get adopted.
Thank you, sir.
And just for clarification, you require, like, if, if, it takes the sum of the entire year's meetings, correct? It doesn't wait the entire year?
Right.
I mean, I, I know that's what you meant, but I just wanted to clarify that.
So if they have six meetings and they miss three through the half-year, that's, it's-
Okay. So we don't have to wait an entire year to find a new member that wants to participate? Okay, I have five cards on this. Rosalie Foster?
Good evening. I'm Roz Foster, known as Roz, and I've been a member of the Brevard County Star Commission, representative for District One since 1998, and thoroughly enjoy being on the commission. Thank you, Rita, for reappointing me. The Brevard County is unique to other boards the commission may be seeking to consolidate or dissolve. This commission serves to comply with both the federal and- This commission serves to comply with both the federal and state legislature through the National Historic Preservation Act, which was established in 1969, and the State Historic Preservation Plan. Resulting in the Comprehensive State Historic Preservation Plan, which is Florida Statute The guidelines to these acts are overseen by the State Historic Preservation Officer. In the framework of our own Brevard County Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 4, Preservation Elements, these mandates are set, addressed by the SHPO office. And the Brevard County Historic Commission has well proven its worth in assisting the county in fulfilling these obligations, as per what I read. During the 50 years plus of existence, the commission has many achievements that have preserved the diverse and rich history of Brevard County. Among the achievements are several publications. The History of Brevard County, which is a three-volume book set, is available purchase for the public and has been distributed to each of the Brevard County libraries. Guide to Historic Landmarks of Brevard County, which includes many of the landmarks that are in the National Register of Historic Places. And sites can be easily found through the GPS coordinates that are included, and we've done all this work. The Indian River Journal, which contains articles and photographs researched and written by commission members, including myself, which I've written many, and documenting the rich history of Brevard County. The commission participates in the Florida Historical Marker Program, which is partially funded by the tourist development tax in recognition of the positive impact that historic preservation has upon tourism. Commission members research and write the text for each marker, and designation processes also through the commission. In addition to processing the designation for each historic marker, commission members also compile paperwork submitted for the master site file. The Oral History Program is one of my favorite. Members propose to the commission, people of interest to interview, arrangements are made for pre-interviews. Oh, I'm sorry, can I have any more time at all?
About 10 seconds, if you can sum it up.
Okay, well, what I want to say is we do a lot, we're all volunteers, but we do an awful lot to preserve the history of Brevard County. And we've worked with NASA, the National Park Service, we have many writers from overseas and many publications that get in touch with us.
Thank you, Roz.
To get information. Thank you so very much.
Jack Ratterman?
I'm going to pass something out, so don't shoot me.
He's all right.
Here's a, that's the marker guide, and this is the latest copy of it, Indian River Journal. I'm not very high-tech.
We can pass that out if you give it to one of us.
I already got one of those.
Good.
Don't encourage him, please.
My name's Jack Ratterman, I'm 568 East Hall Road, Merritt Island. I was recently appointed by Commissioner Lober to the committee, and I'd like to say that our state history goes back to about 10,000 B.C., when, or really further, when Florida drifted across from Africa, and that was our core. And then about 10,000 B.C., hunter-gatherers came. So up to present, we're trying to preserve that in the county. And then if you look at the very last page, there's a picture of the most recent marker we put in. And this was put in at Merritt Island. It's the Dennis Sawyer Cemetery. It was a joint effort between the Historical Association, a couple of other companies that helped us out. Wayne Ivy was real gracious and brought the, I guess you could say, the chain gang in, and they worked, six guys, for about eight hours in the morning. We provided pizza and cokes, and they got all the pepper out of there. We collected about 20, no, sorry, 84 bags worth of garbage out of the cemetery, and we were able to find the graves. And the community there was thrilled. And the handsome guy in the photo, not the one in the blue shirt, the one in the middle, that's Harvey Jordan. And Harvey Jordan was the first all-state football player at Merritt Island High School. And at that meeting, he complained about he'd gained five pounds since graduation. And he was thrilled that this marker was put up, and there was another marker put up for the Mount Olive AME Church, and I never knew what that meant, as African Methodist Episcopal. And they were thrilled about that, too. And if it wouldn't have been for the Historical Association, it would have never been done. And, you know, there's no money for any of that. So the cement, the, picking up the, really, the huge amount of pepper we cut down, that was all done by private people. I decided I would pay for that, and I wanted it done. I'm a longtime member on Merritt Island, and this is my home, and I think it's the best there is. And especially the African-American community there. When we grew up, we all were friends and there was no problems, and it's still that way, I feel. So putting these two markers up meant a lot to me. So I encourage you to let us have a little bit of say in the association, because we meet once every month to get this stuff done. And the time is 6:15, and it's at the Cocoa Public Library, so we're not using employees beyond their normal work hours. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Sullivan?
So I, my concern with this ordinance is further impeding on transparency and accountability. And just a few examples. So one of the things it does not address is having alternates, so when, say, somebody doesn't show up, and these are just a few problems, and you get rid of somebody, somebody hasn't had a chance to attend meetings for a while and learn, like, for example, the Budget Review Board, there's a learning curve. So it doesn't address that. The section on list of advisory boards doesn't say you specify who's on the advisory board and their contact information, so you can reach out to them. I had to do a records request to get that information for the audit committee. The minutes are not listed on there as either, so I had to do a records request for the audit meeting last week to get the minutes. The other issue I have on a particular section, what is it, page 6? Oh, I know, this one bothered me a lot. Page 5, "All requests of time or records, documents, or data shall be made through Advisory Board Chair by the majority vote of county staff liaison." That's going to slow down records requests a lot for somebody who's on the board. They have to wait to another meeting, take a vote on it, so they can get records that they want. And then the one that bothers me the most under Section 2-218, Financial Disclosures, that language on Part B, "Any members of advisory boards whose total budget appropriations, blah, blah, blah," is inconsistent as I read Florida statutes 112, decimal 312. It's actually, seems to be contrary to what is in that language. Thank you very much.
Thanks. I just... Sarah Hodge?
I'm Sarah Hodge, and my husband and I are hoping, please do not dissolve the advisory boards. These are people that put in their time and they donate it. There's no expense for them, and it's a very low-cost way of knowing what the citizens in the area that they're from know what they want. And you, you know, it's a benefit to you, because, you know, you're not able to be out in every community at all times to know what's going, and they do. And I support everyone that spoke here in the historical part. My family's been here since the homestead days, so we have a cemetery, that's Pioneer Cemetery, that's my family's. So please, please listen to all these people. They know more than I do. I'm not a speaker, but please consider not dissolving their board.
Walter Young?
Hello, how are you all? My name's Walter Young, lifelong resident, Sea Park Elementary, Delora Junior High, O'Gally High School. I see that you're going to be providing 219. I think that's the best thing that you guys have ever come up with. I understand that they're wanting to shut down the Historical Commission. I think that's a great idea. I think you guys should shut it down. I don't want these people to know that there was no roads in Brevard County, and the only way to travel was to use a boat. I don't want these people to know that the boats had grocery stores on one side and a hardware store on the other side, and that's how Travis Hardware got its start. I don't want people to know that someone in Cocoa invented the turn signal on a car. Richard Stone, 1955, he actually patented it. A lot of people don't know that. I don't want them to know that. There was a gentleman, he came to a little area and bought a little orange grove, expanded it, expanded it, it got so big, the only way to get those oranges to the northern market was to have a steamship. Well, he had to build a huge dock to get all the way out to the deep part of it, and everybody asked if he could use their, his dock. And he opened it up to the whole entire area, if you need to use the dock, you're more than welcome. And when they wanted to come up with a post office for this little town, they named it in his honor. His name was Mr. Tillman. So the town became Town of Tillman. And you probably have heard of the Melbourne Tillman Canal. And then that little town changed their name to Palm Bay. Now, I don't want these people to know that Town of Tillman used to be Palm Bay. I think you should shut down the Historical Commission. I don't think it's needed. Thank you.
Thanks.
Interesting tech.
I know.
Is that all the cards?
That's all the cards. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to speak directly to Ms. Foster, Mr. Ratter, Mr. Ratterman, Ms. Hodge, and Mr. Young. This is dealing with uniformity. There is no shutting down of any advisory board in what we're about to vote on, one way or another. Whether you support it or not, I completely understand. However, this action does not shut down the historical board or any other of the myriad boards that are before us. Just want to be very, 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 very clear on that. It's not located in any of the language. It hasn't been located in any of the language. And because of the changes that were mentioned, it's not located now. So just to be very, 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 very clear, no board will be shut down because of this. It is dealing with uniformity as a cost-saving method, and that is merely what this does.
Commissioner Smith?
I'm good.
All right, Commissioner...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adopt or propose amendment to the ordinance.
With the change Commissioner Pritchett recommended?
Yes, I apologize.
Do you want to restate it, Commissioner Pritchett? Make it easy for the clerk.
...is absent one half of the scheduled meetings for the calendar year.
Okay. With that amendment, correct, Commissioner Tabia?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. So I have a motion, and it's second by Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item I2?
Please, with the I on.
Oh, whoops.
I won.
Wait, I'm sorry. I won. I apologize.
Yes, good evening, commissioners. This is a resolution creating the South Central Brevard Parks and Recreation Advisory Board by consolidating the Cocoa West Recreation Complex Advisory Committee, the Central Area Merritt Island Beaches Recreation Advisory Board, and the Parks Recreation Department South Area Advisory Board into the newly created advisory board and rescinding all prior resolutions. This particular board would have 10 members, and is currently proposed to have two members voted by District 2, District 3, District 4, and District 5, with two being appointed by any of those four county commissioners.
Okay, I have one card, Commissioner Tabia, do you want to hold on?
Can I jump in and just throw something out? Just a request to him again.
Okay. Commissioner Pritchett?
Hey, Commissioner Tabia, I'm going to support this. I have one favor to ask if we could. The West Cocoa Recreation Complex, they are a community center, so they're not really part of this, and plus, that was the area that didn't vote any referendum funds. So if we could go ahead and just carve them out of this, I don't think they're necessary in the other consolidated boards. And I think you kind of had that thought going, because under membership, I think Districts 2, 3, 4, and 5 were the ones putting the board members on. And that's the only little, it's just a community center that I have in District 1. So if we could just carve that out of it. It's a group of just five people that live in the community. It's just a community center.
Madam Chair?
Sure.
This one, I'm sorry, I just don't understand. What, I don't understand carving out. This is consolidating? Yeah, I apologize, I'm not following.
Okay, I called up Mr. Abate today to kind of get him to help me with kind of the thought of it. But the Central Merritt Island area, and the Beaches Recreation, and the other Recreation Department, all that part of Parks, this is a community center. It's really a little bit different than, I'm going to let him help me with this. He helped me to get a little bit of an understanding with it, because I didn't know what to do with it. Plus, I would be putting people on this board, and he said, well, they're really not part of that, so, sir...
Those individuals are currently appointed by District 1. They only serve that very isolated community, and District 1 would not have been represented on the board as it's in this particular consolidation. And so what she's looking to do is just keep that board, which only functions for the community center, as an independent board under the current resolution that it has.
We could cut those meetings down as well, but they don't have any of the referendum funds. All the other ones voted them through, so they have limited funds as well. And then they have mostly the CDBG funds, so it's a whole different personality right there than those other areas.
Madam Chair, I'm just trying to, it looks like the ones, so are they, they're breaking off of the North Brevard Commission on Parks and Rec, is that correct?
Yes, sir. If they could just become their own little entity, we could knock their meetings down as well, but they just do the community center.
Isn't, but isn't the North Brevard Commission on Parks and Rec, Madam Chair, already, don't all the appointees already come, 100% of the appointees already come from North Brevard Commission? The North Brevard Commission area? I just handed out, I just handed out a proposed thing, and if you look here, there are, it looks like nine folks on there. Four appointees come from District 1, your district. Four come from the city of Titusville, again, your district, and one from the school board.
I think that's the North Brevard Parks and Rec one, which isn't even in this one that you put out here. They're not included in this.
I'm just looking at the...
Yeah, I, you are looking at, Ms. Abby, jump in here. I, you gave me a lot of homework the last few days.
This is the item for the South Central Brevard Parks Recreation Advisory Board, so I believe the request is to remove the Cocoa West Recreation Complex Advisory Committee from this proposal and keep that independent and continuing under its current resolution. So I can...
Okay, so, Madam Chair, so this is to create another board?
It's already in existence. It's just to pull it out of this consolidation.
Not to consolidate?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I, you know, in all honesty, North Brevard already has one.
Commissioner Tabia, the ones that you gave us here wasn't in the packet that you gave us.
Can we, can we put over to Maria?
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, North Brevard Board would be a board, and that would stay. And then what Commissioner Pritchett is proposing is that Cocoa West stay as an independent board, not part of the North Brevard Board. And the actual bylaws and regulations of the Cocoa is that they make recommendations relative specifically to the Cocoa West complex. And then the South Board and the Merritt Island Board would be one board.
Couldn't they, couldn't, Madam Chair, the same way that we do the, a whole number of boards, including tourism, couldn't they be a subcommittee of, of the North Brevard Commission? Yeah, I'm, I think, I think we're on, I think we're on different, I think we're on different ones right now.
This is about the South Central Board.
You're doing I one, right, sir?
Right?
Yeah.
It's not about the North Board.
Yep, I get it. The...
And the South Central Board doesn't have a District One appointment. Those are on the North Board appointments.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay. So, and what we could do, and I have this, I have the, here, we're going with appointments. Yes, District One does not have that, because they have their own independent board. So I understand where we're going here, and that's why I did this, but did not follow. My, my suggestion to that, to get representation on that from District One, we can move from the other section, where we have two from any district, two for five, two through five, we could change that representation into District One, thus giving District One, District Two, District Three, District Four, District Five, each two representatives to that. So there would be representation.
Okay.
And listen, if you are, if this means that much to you, I am willing to donate one of my, heck, you can have both of mine.
Yeah, no, I, that's, that wasn't it at all.
I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to undercut, I just saw District One as having all your appointees, and it was not meant as a slight. But we can change that total on the other and move it into D one, if that works for you.
Yeah, no, no worries with that. I just, I thought maybe you kind of did that on purpose, because you kind of recognized it was a community center as well. So that's what, I just thought that was just a good recommendation. Because the other ones, they do have referendum funds, so they have actually more money. So when you put the, the community center in there, they don't have the same kind of funds they're generating as the other places. So it wouldn't matter to me if we did that. Can I have till Thursday, maybe, to, we can do it, finish it up? Because I kind of studied another avenue.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we waited, we waited this long, and I appreciate, and sunshine prevents any of this from happening, so, and I think I just need to spend a little bit more time, so, Madam Chair.
I did my homework.
I appreciate it.
All right, I do have a card, so I want to hear from the Speaker. Janice Scott?
Janice Scott, I serve on the Beach Advisory Board. Just for full disclosure, I thought in the very beginning, this was probably a good idea to have some reviews, since Commissioner Tobias said that some of these boards hadn't met in 10 years or something. I think it's great. Would have been a great resolution to review what the boards are doing every five years, because it just seems to be not of great importance, what these boards do. They meet, so on and so forth. Maybe you got a written report. I think somewhere in here, you're suggesting that you'd like that report. However, once again, Brevard is a very diverse county that is 75 miles long, probably 1,300 square miles. And these opportunity costs about consolidating these boards, as you suggest, go both ways. Because the people who serve on these boards, you're asking them to cover, when you consolidate, I mean, these parks are very diverse. They go from the wooded areas of Malabar to the beaches. We have bird sanctuaries, picnic areas, showers, bathrooms at the beaches, boating areas, boat ramps, fishing areas. I mean, you want people from Malabar to, who are very, who are very, I mean, they're a distance from the beaches. They don't know as much about the beaches as we do. Those are the opportunities you're going to lose in this consolidation. I don't know how many people are going to end up in, on these boards. You're going to go from 15 members, probably, to seven, or maybe five. Are you saving $5,000 doing this, or $20,000? I really felt bad for the historical people, because if they're confused, I'm still confused, and I don't think you've done a very good job explaining this, to the public or to the board members of what you're doing. It seems really good, you know, when you read the item on the agenda, but, you know, there are people here interested in soccer and sports, and then there are other people interested in surfing and being at the beach all the time. You're taking those kinds of people with those interests who know a lot about one area of their interest, and combining them with people who have completely opposite interests and knowledge in the county, say, in the bird sanctuaries. So I really think that you ought to take a better look at this and maybe explain it. We'd like you to explain it better to the public and to the people who have served on these boards for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I don't know how we, as a board, would do any better on this. I mean, if you're paying attention at all, you would notice, or the, we've done, not only is it, is it explained in words, there are pictures that were put in the packet explaining how the boards would be moved and the maximum number of miles that someone would have to travel. So I, I think the board has done a great job, not only my office, and largely, I didn't do that, my office was the one that did that, Bethany, to be specific. We've, we've debated this quite a bit, and Commissioner Pritchett has a new idea, and I think that it deserves a little bit more time. So at her suggestion, I would make a motion to table this and tell, we don't even have to, do you want to wait till the, Madam Chair, till Thursday or the next regular meeting?
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. If you want to give me more time, that'd be great, but I would work hard for you for 48 hours to.
Yeah, I tell you what, why don't I put, why don't I put any pressure on you or, or the public? And why don't, can we table this till the next meeting on the 17th?
Okay.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Tobias to table item I one till the May 17th meeting. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item I two.
Commissioners, item I two is adoption of a resolution creating the South Central Brevard Public Library Advisory Board by consolidating the South Mainland NICO Public Library Advisory Board, the West Melbourne Public Library Advisory Board, the Sunshir Vieira Public Library Advisory Board, and the Melbourne Beach Public Library Advisory Board into the newly created advisory board and rescinding all prior resolutions. The proposal currently before you has 10 members, three being appointed by District Three, three being appointed by District Four, three being appointed by District Five, and one by any of those four county commissioners.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've just handed out a spreadsheet pretty similar to the last one, looking at the board and how the representatives come from each district. I'm more than willing to change this. I just wanted to put it out. This was, this was my suggestion to make it as equitable as possible, though if anyone has any concerns, I'd be more than willing to entertain them right now. This is not certainly one of my sticking points on this. This was just a suggestion to keep it as equitable and fair as possible.
This is your South Central Library. I think this is what he's proposing to do. He's doing this, yes, he has, no, he has zero for you.
Let's ask Wendy a question.
Commissioner Smith?
Wendy?
Zero, zero, three, 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 right?
I'm not sure any of these boards, and I know people that serve on these boards really do so, because they love the idea of whatever board they're representing. But I don't know that any of them are nearly as passionate about being on the board as library folks. I haven't questioned any library folks, but you hear the scuttlebutt. What are you hearing with regard to doing this? Do they like it, dislike it, hate it, think it can be altered a little bit to make it better? I'm just asking. What do you hear?
Sure, I really don't hear much. I haven't heard much from anybody at this point. So I can't really answer any questions. The Historical Commission that showed up today, that was the first time that I'd heard them speak. So I really haven't heard much. I know that the Cocoa Board was concerned about the gift shop, but we found a way to maintain that for them. The Board for the Cocoa Library does maintain that gift shop, and we found a way to keep that going for them. That was their concern.
Well, you answer my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I've got a little recommendation. I actually kind of like this. Commissioner Tobias, if we made the boards 12 members instead of 10, all we'd have to do is...
Done.
Okay, all the current, all the current members just serve on the boards, and it's all good on both of these.
Okay, I'd do 15 if you wanted. I don't, I don't, if you want more participation, I don't care.
Okay, Commissioner Smith, if we do, if we do 12, you can keep the same board members and just have them all meet together.
Works for me. Good thinking.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, to, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a proposed resolution with the suggestion of increasing the number of appointees from 10 to the suggested 12 by District One.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. I have no cards. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, item I three.
Yes, so, item I three, Commissioners, this is adoption of a resolution creating the North Brevard Public Library Advisory Board by consolidating Port St. John Public Library Advisory Board, Mem Scottmore Public Library Advisory Board, and the Kasten Schweinsberg Rude Central Library Advisory Board into the newly created board and rescinding all prior resolutions. Currently, the proposal before you has 10 members, five being selected by District One, and five being selected by District Two.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Commissioner Tobias, same thing. If we increase it to 12, all the current members can just serve on the board? So it'd be, them just come together for one big board meeting?
Yeah, Madam Chair, so it would be six, instead of five from District One and five from District Two, it would be six from District One and six from District Two, is that correct?
No, I would have four for this current library board. The Port St. John would be the same board, and the Mem Scottmore would drop down one, but it'd be four, four, and four boards. I know that this first one's a big board, but so is the Port St. John. This is tough on Mem Scottmore. You guys know, when Mem Scottmore show up, they're very vocal. So I think if we could do that, I think they would keep their same boards, all come together for one big board meeting for the libraries.
Madam Chair?
Sure.
So, motion to adopt the proposed resolution with the change suggested from District One to take the advisory board from a total of 10 to a total of 12.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Tobias?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item J one. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the March 22nd board meeting, Commissioner Pritchett wisely stated, quote, "I'd work more towards getting the staff rate up with the cost of living that's about to happen," unquote. The state of Florida passed their budget March 14th. The county budget workshop was a couple months prior to that, on February 17th. The state had a 5.38% increase for state employees. That figure was derived from economic and demographic research, a National Economic Estimating Conference, in agreeance with the Consumer Price Index, agreed upon at said conference. It was later adjusted from 5.4 down to 5.38, hence the number I have. As reference, the 5.38 increase is roughly half of that, that the Brevard County Fire Rescue increased, which averaged 9.287, with the highest staff increases of 16.1905%. According to career source, Brevard, Brevard unemployment rate is at an all-time low of 2.5%, yet, as of March 31st, the county has 433 vacancies. Quite simply, we need competitive wages to keep and recruit employees. Current employees are already struggling. Commissioner Smith has pointed out many times the impact of inflation on both businesses as well as individuals. At the March 22nd meeting, I promised to come back with two things. Number one, a proposal, and number two, a funding mechanism that did not raise taxes or cut existing services. So, the proposal, at the budget workshop on February 17th, the option of $1 or 3%, whichever is larger, was suggested. My proposal is $1 or 5.38, again, whichever is larger, to match the state of Florida increase. To be clear, the difference between these two figures, and again, this came from the Budget Office, not me, and I greatly appreciate the time and diligence that went into this, is $941,394. However, the impact on the general fund is just over $500,000, to be exact, $517,767. The other difference will come from enterprise and social revenue funds, including MSTUs, and that accounts for about $423,627. So that's the cost to this, so where do we get this? And that is pretty simple. We have the ability to reallocate District Two CARES funding in a total of $481,000. This was previously allocated by this board for infrastructure projects, staff education, and indigent burials. As always, the additional increase would not apply to commissioners' salaries. Let me say that again, none of us up here, elected officials, will receive the 5.38%. So there is the plan, there is how much it costs, and there is the revenue source that will not cut existing services or raise taxes or fees to fill. I will be more than willing to entertain, be more than willing to entertain any questions that you may have on this proposal.
All right, let's just hear from our cards. Rick Heffelfinger?
Rick Heffelfinger, 2000 Juniper Drive, Cocoa, Florida, 32926. Good information. I did not know all of that stuff. My problem, I guess, is that if you go ahead and do this, this is a salary bump for everybody. I don't know if everybody, are the firefighters included in this group? No. So I'm not sure who's in, so that would be a good question, who's in the group. But if you use the CARES money, you know, we talked about this with the firefighters. The CARES money, you fund it, but the salary increases don't go away. So I, does that get you through one year? I don't know what happens in the following years. So that's, that's one concern I have. I think you covered my question about how you calculated the money, but that CARES money is an interesting question about, that's only a Band-Aid. That's, that's going to have long-term effects. I don't know if that's been done. I would assume this goes to Frank Abat to look at salary, HR, costs, right? So will there be a projected cost over the next two years when you bump this up? If you've got a lot of people that are not currently filling positions, that doesn't cost as much. This, this is everybody, right? So all those open positions, the salary rates go up by, is that what's going to happen? I don't know if that's true or not, because if you don't have these positions filled, you're not paying anybody, right? So it doesn't cost as much. But if you're going to apply this across everybody that potentially could fill those, I don't know what happens when you're fully staffed. If it, that's just, I don't know the answer is. Talk about competitive, so you need to raise the cost because you've got unfilled positions. I guess that's, that sounds logical. I'll buy that, because I did not know you had that many unfilled positions. Interesting. I would imagine that those unfilled positions, though, your level of service would probably be hurting. I don't know how you, you know, we're not going to affect that. Let me see, and again, I guess my biggest concern is, and I didn't know it until now, but you throw that CARES money at it, what happens in the following years? What's... What's the long-term impacts? I'd like to see that before we just, I realize, hey, inflation's going up, I hate to be the guy that says, "Well, you know, I don't want to pay them anymore." But if it's a long, there's going to be, I imagine, with all this inflation, we're going to get it again. We're going to get tax increases, that's just the reality of it. But I'd like to see what this does at this point, because this could be transitory inflation, and I don't want to go ahead and throw a bunch of money at a problem until we determine it's not transitory. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Sullivan?
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. I would have liked to have seen a financial analysis uploaded to legislator, and I questioned the financial impact of basically $517,000. So this is, this is from the budget meeting, and this is, so this is proposing 5.38% cost of living increase. So you're at 2% COLA, we have a $2 million impact. At 3% COLA, we have a $5 million impact. So I don't know where you got the half a million dollar impact. And by 20 fiscal year, '26, '27, with 3%, it's almost $26 million with the combination of years. So I would like to see a little bit more financial analysis to justify the point that says, without raising taxes or cutting current level of service, to come back and show the actual fiscal cost of this and how this is going to be paid, and whether it's going to result in tax increases. I do understand there is a problem with retention of employees right now, and that we have a lot of inflation, and looking at a cost of living impact increase is appropriate. But I think thoroughly, there needs to be a fiscal analysis done and projections and how you're going to pay for it. Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
We are in a highly competitive market right now, and there was a meeting last night about the homeless situation, and it's painful. And then we have families right now, have a hard time feeding their families, and there was this wonderful thing, state of Florida up the minimum wage, which sounds good, but the problem with that is now all the expenses are up here even locally as well, because you have to roll the cost over the consumer. And then on top of that, we've had all this mess go on, and I don't know if you guys have looked at your food bill lately, it's up. The gas is about $4 and something a gallon now. And so all these rates are going up, prices are going up. So here's the thing, we have county staff now, and Commissioner Tabia, thank you for bringing this up, because everybody's going to have to get increases just to, to just stay in the competitive market. It is hard to get people to fill positions because the job market is so, everybody's wanting to find the best jobs they can right now, and there's still so many people that want to work at home. So, Commissioner Tabia, I like the ideas that you threw out here of ways to find the funds, but I do want to reiterate that when we do this, this is the county manager's budget. He's supposed to go find a ways to fulfill what we need him to fulfill. We tell him we want this to happen, he's got to come back with suggestions of how to make this work. And he's done a very good job the whole six years I've been here. So I'm, I think he's hearing us on this. Commissioner Tabia, thank you for doing this. I'm going to support it if the manager can come back and find the funds to do it. And does this mean costs are going to go up in the future? Absolutely. They're going to continue to go up for a long period of time till the recession hits number, interest rates go up, and then other prices will adjust. So, just time to save your money and work hard, guys, and see what's coming up in the future. But I just wanted to say that, Commissioner Tabia, I do support this, because we have to support this statewide right now, trying to get income up to people. So, thank you, sir, for that, and I'm looking forward to see how the county manager gets creative, find a way to fund this.
Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to deal with a couple of issues brought up, because there were some good ones. Mr. Heffelfinger brought up a very good point about reoccurring versus non-reoccurring funds. Yes, this is a Band-Aid for the first year. However, that difference is roughly half a million dollars, as mentioned before, and I'll get there in a minute to deal with the second speaker. Our budget sits a little bit over $1.6 billion. It's a small percentage. As we move forward, let me give you some reoccurring funding sources that we'll get to in Commissioner Pritchett's suggestion, but those would be vacancies, as you mentioned, as well as new construction, which is somewhere between $3 and $5 million each and every year. As far as the groups, the fire union is with a collective bargaining agreement. As mentioned before, many of those folks got raises that are multiples of the one that is being provided here. And to the best of my knowledge, there's another union here that has a clause that they would receive the same increase that the rest of the rank, of the individuals that are not members of unions. Let me be very clear, again, I know I said this once before, but let me say it again, this would not apply to any of the county commissioners up here. So that is definitely an astute comment with reoccurring versus non-reoccurring, those are some ways to do it. Second of all, we get to Ms. Sullivan, who, again, looked at stuff extremely superficially, which we, as a board, do not have the luxury of doing. In order to understand what is going on here and why the increase is not as simple as she would have appreciated it, you must look at the number of employees that make below a certain figure, where the dollar increase is, in fact, quite a bit larger than the 5.38. So that is why the 5.38, as you get larger, has a less impact than what is initial. Again, this requires quite a bit more than just superficially looking at, it's far out of my abilities, and that's why we have a staff that spent quite a bit of time going over the difference between the two, the three, and what is now the 5.38% increase. So, I understand, again, looking at one PowerPoint slide and not doing any independent look yourself, however, it is patently incorrect. A great deal of work has gone into this to get to those numbers. And finally, to Commissioner Pritchett, you are 100% correct. Mr. Abate has done an absolute wonderful job with the budgets, and I have a great deal of faith in him. And if he comes up with a better way to do this, I will fully support that. It was just a promise that I made to this board, that I would come back with a number, and I would come back with a way to fund that without increasing taxes or decreasing the current level of service. So if Mr. Abate comes back with something, I fully will support it, assuming it meets those criteria. But it was a promise I made to you, and one that I thought was only fair, because otherwise, you know, ideally, we'd like to give our employees, I mean, personally, I would like to give our employees all the same increase. I would love to give the increase to the employees that weren't members of the union, a 16% increase as we did, but it's just not something that is feasible at this point. So, I hope that answers the three speakers, but I'd like to, you know, sure, more discussion, but to direct staff to reallocate the remaining District Two funds towards reaching the 5.38% cost of living pay increase for county employees, and any additional dollars that would not decrease current service levels, unless the county manager has another idea to fulfill that hole. This is very important to mention, because we have already appropriated those funds. I just think that it's fair that should the county manager need to go into those CARES funds, we need to make a motion giving him that authority. This does, this certainly does not guarantee he does that, but this just gives another quiver and arrow in the quiver. So that's the motion, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Smith? I have a motion by Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Tabia, you alluded to the Mr. Abate, and I thought it was pretty slick of you to come up with the one-time funding of using District Two money. I think that was a good idea, but as also been mentioned, my question when I saw this was, what do, what do we do in years two, three, five, and going forward? Is this, what kind of hardship, or is this going to be a piece of cake? That's, I guess, the question I have.
Excuse me, I'm happy to answer that for you, Commissioner. You know, my responsibility is going to be, if the board passes this motion, is to look at what we were previously doing. The $1 an hour, as Commissioner Tabia pointed out, is somewhere between 3% and 9% for a large portion of the board's employees, because of where their wages are currently. So it's a way for us to start moving up. That's why we initially proposed the dollar an hour, because we needed to do that, we'll need to do that over multiple years to get to $15. We have employees who are at $10 an hour now, 11, 11.50, and so there are employees in those categories, there are a lot below 15. So the dollar an hour accomplishes two things. One, it helps the very lowest of employees, which are between, you know, the salary ranges that I've now indicated on an hourly basis, and gets them to somewhere between 3% and 9%. And also helps us get closer to the $15 an hour. The 3%, which was where we were, my understanding is going to be, we are going to look at doing what we need to do to raise all the salaries of everyone else to that, if a dollar an hour is not more than 5.38%, then the other employees are going to get 5.38%. For those that it's more, then they're still going to get the dollar an hour. So we will work to do that, it needs to be reoccurring in the longer term. So when we do that, it's for this one year. Obviously, if there's additional dollars, if they're one-time dollars dedicated to us, that doesn't solve the issue for me on the longer term, because I've got to be ready for the next year and what the impact of that will be. I will tell you that we have an additional issue, and that is the vacancies, as we were indicating, the 433-plus. Well, that's a very significant problem for our organization from this perspective. One, it's not unique to our organization, you can talk to almost any organization, and they're going through these similar types of problems in terms of the number of vacancies and what they're having to do to fill positions or retain the employees we have. That's especially problematic for us in terms of the lower-paid employees, which we have a lot of positions, quite honestly. Our average vacancy rate organizationally, and I've been here a lot of years, it's usually been between 8% and 10%, maybe in a bad year, 12%, rarely above that, but it did happen occasionally. Well, we have a lot of positions in the county that are between 20, 25, and 67%. That is not sustainable in the level of service we're providing, and some of them are in rather critical areas. For example, solid waste is having that problem in very, very key areas. We have to do something very significant. The 5.38, if the board approves it, that's one step, but we are planning to come to the board and ask for pay plan adjustments that are going to affect a variety of classifications, where currently our vacancy rate is at such a level that we're not able to provide a service. We would have normally between 174 and about 220 vacancies during the course of the year at any particular time. We're at 400-plus now. We have to do something to stop the bleeding in that area. So we're going to come back with a pay plan. I'm going to tell you, there's not additional monies for us to doing it. I'm going to be looking at the current level of service that we're able to provide, and when we have very long-term vacancies for extended periods of time, we're going to be looking to departments to use some of those vacancies to fund what we need to do. That's a reoccurring cost that could take care of it. So we're going to listen to everything very intently in what the board says. We're not going to cut the current level of service that we're providing. We're not going to look anything to ask for additional funds beyond the 3%. That could be part of the charter cap, which would be the normal increase, but we'll look to fund what the board approves tonight and what we will bring back to the board by the end of the month, before you go on the June break, so we can be ready to have a budget, which is my responsibility to get to you, for next year, that takes into account whatever the board decides to approve and let us move forward on, so that we can start doing some of the things we need to do in a variety of positions that, you know, we have very significant vacancies at this point. So I appreciate the board's confidence. I promise you that staff and I have already been looking at this, and we will come back and try to give you the best that we can do to get us to the best future position that we can in light of where funding is and the direction that the board gives me tonight. So thank you very much for asking the question. Thank you for, each of you commissioners, for the support that you've given and knowing where we're trying to take things.
And thank you for allowing me to, you and I have talked about this, and so I knew what your answer was going to be. So this allows me to segue into where I would like to have a conversation with my fellow commissioners, because we can't do it unless we're here. I've encouraged my appointees to the charter review to reconsider or consider a different benchmark instead of the CPI. We all know that our budget says CPI or 3%, whichever is lower. Well, the problem with CPI is, it takes into account, it's a household measure, it takes into account eggs, bread, peanut butter. It doesn't take into account large purchases like ambulances, fire trucks, the things that we spend $300,000 and $500,000 on. And just for example, I was looking at the Producer Price Index yesterday. Any guesstimate as to what it went up just in the last month? 16%. One month. So, this is the struggle these folks are dealing with, because the prices that they're dealing with and we're responsible for are through the roof, and trying to make this happen on a 3% CPI, it never was realistic, it's not even in the ballpark of being realistic now. So I would encourage you guys to reach out to your, if you agree with me, to look at a different kind of index to go forward with, because we're going backwards, guys.
Keep in mind, too, that you can also bring things to the board for ballot, if you don't make it through the charter review.
And I am very much aware of that.
Is that a four-person vote?
Yeah. And that's another discussion I was going to bring up during my time later.
I've gotten curious.
Thank you.
And I guess I just want to be clear, and I know it's already been stated, the District Two money's been already allocated for infrastructure projects, right? So if the CARES money that District Two allocated for that, it's not coming from any sort of social programs or any kind of aid that we've already provided or that we plan on providing in the future as part of those CARES funding, correct?
You did, they did allocate a variety of funds, Jill's coming up. I don't believe the funds that were done, the, at the last meeting where funds were allocated, I don't think we've expended hardly any of those funds at this point, because it takes time, a lot of them, it takes time between, you start looking at contracts, et cetera. But Jill, do you have a...
That's correct. None of the funds have been expended. It was allocated, there was about $480,000 remaining. I believe $60,000 of that went to education for employees, $5,000 was indigent burials, and then the rest was split for infrastructure for utilities and public works projects.
And the $60,000 was tuition reimbursement that Human Resources had.
Okay. Again, I think my point was, we weren't taking from any of the financial aid we were providing for residents.
That's correct.
And about...
Except for the $5,000, well, not $5,000, that was done, I believe, $2,000.
Right, for indigent burials. And we do have separate funding set aside in general government mandates for indigent burials as well, that we have available.
And as far as our rental and bill assistance and that sort of thing, and food security, how much monies do we still have available approximately in that area? Ballpark?
I would have to get you that information. I don't have it in front of me.
Is it millions?
It's, I don't think it's millions, it's somewhere around a million. The total was 1.8 or something, so I'm sure I'll get the information.
The money that housing has through the various... The money that housing has through the various, there's a variety of different funds that are out there. I think significantly more than a million.
Actually, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was thinking of the one.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure there was no needs.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Tobias?
Yes, we were appropriated about $18 million in housing assistance. As I spoke with Ian earlier today, we've appropriated somewhere in the neighborhood as of now about 11.8 of that 18 million. So there's more than $6 million floating around. On top of that, there's an additional $14 million in another funding source that has come through. And his goal, and I think it was a very good one, is to expend the first bit of resources before he tapped into the second one. And we did say of that $14 million, he's only received roughly about a third of it. So when we receive all of it, just in rental assistance alone, we're talking a total of about $20 million of resources just for funding, just for rental assistance alone. Again, those are numbers that were provided this morning by Ian Golden.
Thank you. Yeah. All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias on the floor.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, item J2. Thank you, Jill.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, this is an unusual one, and I have to go through a little bit of the history of that, so if you bear with me for a couple minutes. Currently, Brevard County holds a lease agreement with the State of Florida for James H. Nance Park as well as Sunrise Park in Indy Atlantic. Brevard County then leases these parks to the town of Indy Atlantic. Here's the history of the two, and then I will explain the direction I'd like to potentially ask this Board to go and the reasons why it is best not only for us, but for the cities and probably the residents who use those parks. So we'll start off with Sunrise and Nance Park were purchased using funds from Brevard County's Beach and Riverfront Program and Save Our Coast Program. Under this program, the county provided approximately 50% of the purchase price, and the state provided the remaining amount. In exchange for 50% reimbursement, the county transfers the title to the state and receives a long-term lease of that property. Nance, Brevard County purchased property from James H. Nance Park, 5.42 acres in 1986. Brevard County then transferred the title to the property of the State of Florida, which then leased the park back to the county. That same year, Brevard County leased the property to the town of Indy Atlantic to manage and maintain. Under the lease agreement, the town of Indy Atlantic, at their expense, is responsible for the development, maintenance, and operation of the park. The lease between Brevard County and the town of Indy Atlantic will expire in the year 2057. When the lease expires or terminated, the state retains ownership of the property. Now, Sunrise, also 1986, Sunrise Park, 1.5 acres, was acquired and treated the same way as Nance Park. In 2002, Brevard County leased the property to the town of Indy Atlantic to manage and maintain. Under the lease agreement, the town of Indy Atlantic, at their expense, is responsible for the construction, operation, and daily maintenance for the purpose of conducting recreational activities. The town, sorry, the lease between Brevard County and the town of Indy Atlantic will expire in the year 2037. Again, when the lease expires or terminated, the state retains ownership of the property. So basically, we're the middleman here. And my goal is, as a Board, to get us out from the middle. So let me explain why getting us out from the middle behooves not only us, but the city as well as the residents. And it's slightly different based on the agreements with the town, the county, and the state for each park. So I'll start with Sunrise Park. The reason the town may like this is the town is required to get the approval of Brevard County before placing any personal property or equipment at the park and to get approval from any plans and improvement for said park. The reason the county may like it, the county indemnifies the state for any claims related to the county's use and management of the property, and the county is required to maintain insurance or self-insure against potential liability or property damage at the park. So we have potential costs. And here's a personal reason, and the reason I probably got into this. The town of Indy Atlantic charges for parking. While I'm not suggesting we get rid of it, I think that's a town's decision, and quite frankly, I don't want to be associated with the charging of parking. James H. Nance Park, let me tell you the reason the town may like it. The county must again approve any grant application or future development for plans to submission or commencement of work. The county reason may like this pursuant to the county's lease with the state, the county is responsible of security and protection of the park. The county must notify the state prior to construction or removal of any building or improvement to the park. Another reason we probably like it, the county indemnifies the state for any claims and action arising out of the use and management of the park. The county is responsible for self-insuring or obtaining fire, public liability, and extend coverage insurance for the park. Third reason, the county indemnifies the state for all liabilities, damages, and attorney's fees arising from the park. And a judgment is entered against the state related to the park, the county must satisfy said judgment. Personal reason again, again, the town charges for parking. Any charges and parking rates for Nance Park must be approved by the county. I just don't want to be associated. We have done a very good job providing services and not charging for parking. The cities have not. So I'm just trying to get us out of this, the middle. There's reasons why it benefits everyone involved, not only the county, not only the city, but the residents who use that park. So the conclusion, these are the only two parks where the county serves as just a mere pass-through between the state and municipality, and I think it behooves everyone to get it off the books. It would be conducive to remove ourselves from the equation and let the town lease it directly from the state. So the motion is to direct staff to explore options on transferring state lease agreements associated with James H. Nance Park and Sunrise Park from the county to the town of Indy Atlantic. This is not doing it. This is just directing staff to begin negotiations for the reasons that have been mentioned, getting us out from subleasing the property. I'm more than willing to answer any questions, but I think this is a win-win for everyone involved.
I agree. I'll second that. Good catch.
Yeah, it is my district. Have you talked to the mayor of Indy Atlantic or anything about it? Or anybody in the town?
The mayor of Indy Atlantic spends quite a bit of time on Facebook.
He does.
Yes, he does. And I don't. He is not the greatest fan of me, so.
Geez, wait a minute. I can't even imagine.
Join the club.
He does, he does appreciate raising taxes, though, over and over and over again. But regardless, there are benefits. There are clear benefits to the town of Indy Atlantic, and I don't think we should get, I have no beef with him whatsoever. I don't think we should allow personal relationships to get in the way of good policy. Again, I.
And it keeps them from having to ask us permission to do anything.
Absolutely. Gives them the ability to charge even more for parking.
Mary Ellen?
Yes, good afternoon. Mary Ellen Donner, Parks and Recreation Director. I did mention to the town manager, Michael Casey, that this agenda item was going to be on the consideration for this evening.
What is your opinion on, as far as the county reaching out to the state? Do you think the state's likely to be okay with that sort of arrangement? Or do you think?
I don't think we've ever approached the state to ask them if we could be removed from the middle of the lease. You know, we wanted to get some sort of direction from the Board of County Commissioners before we started that conversation.
Is the county's position that we would, it would be in our best interest to get out from under the, being the middleman in this? Frank, Mary Ellen?
I think you heard from Commissioner Tobias what's in the lease that would be a liability from the county's perspective. I think, you know, we'll just be following the Board's direction on that, because we are a pass-through, but there are certain liabilities that are there.
Okay.
Madam Chair, those were all from the, I went through the agreement, but Abby's office also went through the agreement, so those have all been verified through the county attorney's office. So legal has looked over it.
Okay. All right, I'll support it. There's no cards. You should have given it to the clerk. What's the Board's desire? Leave it up to the Board?
I lose a dollar, but she's more than wrong.
Okay.
Your call.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So of course, the High Tower and the Pelican were similar. There were state leases at the north and the south of High Tower, and they were handed over to Satellite. Having reviewed those contracts from 1986 under the Save the Coast Program, in there, there's a provision that there be no differential in parking. And the consideration also should be made of the sand re-nourishment that the county does. So I have emails from Mike McGary advising when they wanted to exit, you know, hand over the lease over to Satellite Beach for the High Tower property, where the state lease is at the north and south of that property. And he made a list of the requirements that the city would need to agree with, and that's why there was a covenants, you know.
Is this about this item, Ms. Sullivan?
Yes. Lease agreements for Nance Park and Sunrise, state lease agreements. So there's a state lease agreement with the county on the north end of High Tower. You've been through this before. You've been through this process before. So in, when you released and you handed over a lease and it took you guys out from being the middlemen on that particular property, Mike McGary wrote and legal advised the city that they had to agree to having no differential in fees as part of assuming that lease. So I would urge the county to take a look at these leases and not approve this today, but go back and read those, because in that, under the Save the Coast Program, same timeframe, same leases with the state, there was a provision in there that said there could be no differential in fee. And that ties also into the county responsibility in doing the sand re-nourishment as part of agreements with the state. So I would just look into those two aspects. Thank you.
Perhaps if we had any recommendations we could send along to the state, you know, as far as beach re-nourishment, I guess we could include that. But, I mean, that would be the state's responsibility to make sure if they're direct leasing, correct, if we move forward?
Right, the terms, obviously, you know, the state's going to have to determine at that point what terms they want in any lease agreement, if they're willing to let the county out. Like Commissioner Tobias mentioned, there's a variety of, you know, I don't want to say strings, potential liabilities. We have deeper pockets in the city, so I don't know what the state's going to do in terms of letting us out. But obviously, you know, those are the liabilities or the risks that the county has when we're not, in fact, operating in any way these two parks, the municipalities are in both instances.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion. You seconded it already, right, Commissioner Smith? All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, I have no public comment cards. Moving on to board reports, Mr. Abate?
I don't have any additional reports.
Ms. Jornby?
No report.
Commissioner Prichet?
Mary Ellen, you're running off. Mary Ellen? I don't really have a board report, but you told me something that was very significant when you first came in about a park employee that saved a child today. I just want to give him a shout out, so if you would.
So there was an incident at Manzo Park in District One, and one of the county employee, maintenance employees, Tony, was on the scene and actually pulled the child out of the water, and the child was medevac to Arnold Palmer. So he actually was on scene, recognized the emergency, and we're very thankful that he was.
Oh, that's amazing. Please thank him for us. Commissioner Tobias? Oh, you got a grin. I'm nervous.
No. So the school board just voted to put a millage increase on the ballot. I have not spent the time looking at what that increase would entail. To be quite honest, the vote was four to one, but there is a quirk here in state statute. And it's open for, in my perception, it's open to a little bit of interpretation. But it appears as though that potentially we may need to vote to push that through. It's 1011.73, the school board, "A district pursuant to a resolution adopted at a regular meeting shall direct the county commission to call an election." Now, you know, it depends how you determine, direct us. If it's a direction, my interpretation is I don't need to vote on this. And if someone else's interpretation is, I need to vote on it, and that means I have a choice. And my choice, should this come up, is very simple. I will not be voting to put a proposed increase of millage on the ballot. I understand that may cause some concerns. I have spoken with Chairman Randy Fine. His interpretation is the same. His, he may have other reasons. He knows quite a bit more about the budget. However, should this come up, and I will be voting against putting this forward. I just did not think it would be fair to do this at the last second and blindside the rest of not only our board, but that of the school, of the school board. I thank a school board member, Matt Susan, for voting against this, and I will follow his lead and also vote against this, should it be determined that we have to make that determination. Because if we have a vote, we have a choice, and my choice would be no. If this is directed and can go automatically, I will still be voting no, but I will be voting no as a constituent. But either way, I just wanted to certainly inform the Board of the way I will be voting should this come forward.
Well, we would have to ask Abby for her perspective.
Ms. Jornby?
Yes, so I have actually already spoken to the school board attorney. I know they have adopted the resolution under full statute 1011.73. It does essentially say that the school board is to adopt a resolution, and it shall direct the county commissioners to call an election for the electors to vote on this proposal. So in my discussion with him, it was basically, we, you know, we agree that it's basically ministerial. It's so they can actually have a referendum. They don't have that authority to do that, so the Board is used as the mechanism to do that. We had this item come up a couple years ago as well, so it's something we put on the agenda, but it's basically direction from state law as it's written right now.
Is there case law on this? I mean, were it, because of, as Commissioner Tobias said, if we're given a choice whether or not we vote to put something on the ballot, then why do they need our vote at all?
I did look at the cases. I did not find anything, and specifically, if a county commission declines to put something on the ballot. So I think we'd be making case law.
Well, I think these are part of what I wanted to talk about during my board report. Commissioner, are you still talking?
I'm done. Madam Chair, this is to vote where it will be should this come before.
And I think my question's going to be the same. Like, it's, I'm glad you brought that up, because that's, that's an interesting piece of information. I don't know as far as the Attorney General goes. I don't know if this is an ethics commission. I think it's more Attorney General opinion. But, and I know we talked about the supermajority based on the vacancy, because depending on, when you read certain ordinances we have, it says vote of the majority of the Board, and then some of it says majority of the, of what is it, the total Board. I can't remember how it says it, but there's two different versions of it. I talked a little bit with Scott Knox about it back in the past, before you and I even had a conversation, and he said it could be interpreted both ways, because we have a vacancy. And so I know you're pretty set to think that we need, for a supermajority, it's going to require all four votes, but I know that that's important, given that we're going to have things.
And it just depends on, so the language, so on this item for the school board, I don't think it requires a supermajority. I think it's a simple majority vote. As far as amending the charter and the Board of County Commissioners, that language is contained in Section 7, Charter Amendment 7.31. It says, it has to be a concurrence of not less than four members to actually, for this Board. So it just depends on each, what we're trying to accomplish. So under that particular section, it even says not less than four members.
Okay.
So at that point, depending on whether it's going to be, like, the charter cap, the bump on a charter cap, it is actually. bump on a charter cap, it is actually, it says the supermajority of the board. So I think the opinion on that is always four as well.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Would that be considering, though, that there'd be five members? Would that change if there's four? Would that, would that change an opinion? Now, there's another fours in there, but there was five.
Correct.
Would that be any kind of thing that would be up for interpretation that we need to check on?
I think we should.
So I did speak to the Attorney General yesterday on a completely unrelated matter, and she indicated it takes three to six months to get a response if we did submit something. So I think we would, the deadline for getting a referendum right now, I understand from the Superbowl elections, August 22nd. So I don't think we're gonna, we potentially would not make that if...
Can we still ask? So we, I mean, if it's three months and we ask for an emergency ruling, given our time crunch, and maybe we could specify those dates, I would at least like to hear from them.
Just so we're sure.
Just so we're certain.
And that would be specifically, I guess, as to the supermajority?
Mm-hmm.
Or, okay, not as to the school board?
Well, the school board, I definitely wanna know about that as well. If it's, I mean, it...
Because that would, they obviously, yes, I mean, I don't know if we would actually get that opinion back before us to get it on the ballots. I mean, it'd just be something, I mean, we can definitely do that.
That puts a lot of responsibility on us with that, especially with the smaller board that we have right now, because if it's two and two, you know, what does that mean? And I don't want responsibility for the budget.
And three, three out of four...
Yeah.
Technically isn't a supermajority if you go by the whole...
And as an individual, Matt Susan not vote for it really has my antennas up, so I, I don't wanna even get into that, but...
He was safe not to vote for it, but anyhow.
Yeah, so, that's tough.
And if it's an administrative thing, then I don't know why it needs to be voted upon, I guess is the question.
Well, they adopted the resolution, so I think the way we had done it before is we're basically acknowledging the resolution and, you know, calling for that election, essentially, putting it on the referendum, if I remember correctly. But that's under the state law.
What means though if we didn't, though it doesn't go on the referendum? So I don't like that responsibility either.
Well, that's something as a board we'll have to figure out.
Madam Chair?
Sure.
Quick question for county attorney. Does it make more sense to ask the Attorney General or vote no and let the school board do what they may decide to do?
Wow.
Or not? I don't, I don't know. What makes more sense? I'm open to either one. It sounds like, I don't know that there's a vote, in all honesty. I was just giving my opinion. I will be voting no should this come forward, but maybe this is something better to handle individually.
And if two of us vote no, it fails. It's gone.
Well, you already got two.
You?
Yeah.
Oh, well, there's your answer.
That's my answer. So I anticipate we were gonna, we've discussed about putting that item, we'll come onto the agenda for the school board, and then at that point, that's the request so far. But I mean, so we'll just move that item forward.
Okay, who's putting it on the agenda? It's our agenda, correct?
Uh...
The board's agenda?
Yes, but citizens can do, you know, put stuff on the, I don't, I'm not gonna be putting it on the agenda. Should it get on the agenda? I think, and we'd have to ask, I don't, we might wanna put it on the agenda and vote it down. I mean, I don't know what, I mean, legally, I don't, I don't, this was just a coverage...
We're gonna give poor Mr. Abate a stroke on the end?
Well...
Sorry, shaking his head.
I anticipate the school board will be giving it to me to put on the agenda at an upcoming zoning meeting when the four of you are here.
And Madam Chair, I certainly don't wanna hinder the county manager's ability from putting it on the agenda. I think that, you know, if we are fundamentally against this, we should stand up and say no with a microphone in front of, you know, in front of our face.
Have to follow the procedure.
And I know there's differing opinions, speaking of the charter review, back to the charter review commission, on what our obligation is. If something comes from the charter review commission, we're obligated to then put it on the ballot? Is that correct? Unless it's unconstitutional or against state law?
And I would venture to say that the school board will be aware by tomorrow that what the board's position is tonight, so they'll have the opportunity to prepare to do whatever they think they need to do.
That's Commissioner Chabai causing all that trouble, just for the record.
And right of what you're saying.
Right, so, okay, so as far as the charter review commission, now Ms. Abby, I didn't mean to surprise you with these questions, but if something from the charter review commission comes to the board and, say, a commissioner has an item that contradicts what the charter review commission brings to the board, at that point, what does that mean? Because we have the, we have the, I guess, the ability to put things directly on the ballot as a board.
That is correct. You do have that ability, so...
So what happens if our, if our items contradict? Do they both end up on the ballot?
Well, to get, so we have the independent review, so you're assuming that it's already gone through that dependent, and it's been found in violation of state constitution or state statutes, so at that point, I believe it would be competing ballot language, so I would have to look into that. I mean, I, I mean, I know the board has that ability, and then obviously, as far as the charter review commission, they have that ability as long as it's...
Because I've not seen anything that, you know, strikes me as like crazy concerning necessarily. It's just if they wanted to do something that we thought might be harmful or misunderstood or whatever, and, say, a board member came up with something that contradicted that language.
Yes, I would have to look into that, about having competing ballot items.
And is that, is that three board members or four?
That would be four board members, because it's specifically in the charter that says you need, it says you need four, a minimum of four.
Okay. To put stuff on the ballot.
That is correct, for, by the board itself, yes.
Okay. Just making sure. All right, that's all I had.
So was that a direction for me to go get an Attorney General opinion still on the supermajority item? Just wanted to clarify on that, or was that resolved by the...
I mean, I don't know how you guys feel about it. I'd like to hear it from the Attorney General.
I would too, just because we're different.
On the, on the supermajority?
Yeah.
I don't see any harm, I don't see any harm.
Because we have a vacancy. We don't, you know...
Because it didn't say unanimous, so...
Right.
It says fours, which makes me think that considering five, and it could be just the same with that, it could have been written in.
There's no option for the fifth. It's not like he's absent. Or it's not like that individual exists.
Okay.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. The board have anything else?
For the record, I have no report.
Oh, did we skip you? I am so sorry.
You're the best reporter. You said no.